Seventeenth is called to order for the special council meeting agenda. We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hotchkiss.
Here.
Councilmember White.
Here.
Mayor Protam Dominguez.
Here.
Councilmember Rouse.
Here.
Councilmember Hart.
Here.
And Councilmember Maria.
Here.
And Mayor Schneider is absent today.
Any public comment? Okay. Closed session item.
Item two, conference with labor negotiator as described in Agenda item number two.
We'll adjourn to closed session and return here at 2:00.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hotchkiss.
Here.
Councilmember White.
Here.
Mayor Protam Dominguez.
Here.
Councilmember Rouse.
Here.
Councilmember Hart.
Here.
And Councilmember Maria.
Here.
And Mayor Schneider is absent.
Any changes to the agenda?
No, Mr. Mayor.
We'll start now with public comment. Wayne Scholes, you have up to two minutes.
Yeah, I want to remind the public, I was here last week and got cut off by the mayor. I was talking about the $800,000 and some $1,000,000 the city has paid in lawsuits for failing to do repairs on city streets and sidewalks that resulted in lawsuits, and it took over 12 years to fix one. There's currently a lawsuit now, and I know the mayor didn't want to be here today anyway because she's going to be indicted in this lawsuit. If anybody, any of the cities our size follow the Harris recommendations, they generally have two or three illnesses a year. Santa Barbara chose not to follow the Harris recommendations, and we have averaging a 15 a year. This is why we need to vote no on Measure C. Measure C does not guarantee that the money that we're going to be charged in a new tax is going to go anywhere. It can be used for anything. That's ridiculous. That's like hiring the fox to come in to watch the chickens at night to try to see if he can find out why the chickens are being killed. It's just totally ridiculous. 12 years, and they never fixed it. This woman that was injured in this incident has additional medical conditions that is probably going to result in her death. So, the problem with this is, we have the public being injured because the city, certain departments, and certain people in this city refuse to do what they should be doing, and that's protect the public. And that's why I said, every single time you hear somebody that's running for office say, "Public safety is my number one concern," then put up or shut up. And that's another reason why I'm supporting Frank Hotchkiss. You don't have to believe or agree with what Frank says, but I guarantee you, when he says something, you know that's what he means. He's not pandering to the public. Okay, now, that's just sidewalks.
Thank you.
Okay. We also need to change this, Frank. When you get elected, we need to change this after dinner so that the public can show up.
Now we'll hear from Mr. Clint Orr.
You have to take time off work to come down here and speak.
It's time for Mr. Clint Orr to come up.
This is ridiculous.
After Mr. Orr will be Mr. Walker.
Hello, council members. Of course, I'm Clint Orr. On the eve of the election, it's pretty exciting, huh? I'm not pandering, and I'm not trying to...
Could you please take the conversation outside? Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Orr.
Okay, well, can we reset or something? Okay. I'm not pandering, and I hope that all the candidates seek to redefine the parameters of affordable housing, to develop an algorithm based on 40% availability with no new water meters to show families, you know, the ability to buy the properties they're already in, okay? Allow them to purchase them with like a 60%, 15-year no-payment second trustee aid. It's just a, it's on Santa Barbara real estate. We get a mortgage insurance company that covers it. And so if you're, if you're living on Gittera Street and you've got a house that's worth 600, and you can only afford 200, we put a $400,000 second on that property at prime plus a half, and now all of a sudden, you have someone that has bought the home that they're living in. You know, when, when they refinance or sell, then the money's paid back. So, it's not a loss. Yeah, and again, we'll get a mortgage insurance company. So, I really am big on the affordable housing through purchasing homes that exist. I also, of course, as you know, I'm big on putting an entertainment venue north of Hollister on the Santa Barbara Airport Authority property. I've been talking about that for, this is my fifth year, actually, about the 30th time I've spoken here about that. And I think having, entertainment venues are bigger than sports venues.
Thank you, Mr. Orr.
You cut me off there for a second. And, and so having a dance hall with live bands would be a good place for, it'd be good for the, for the airport. Amtrak will love it, the community will love it. It solves the airport bankruptcy and solvency.
Okay, give me your next 25 seconds.
And I hope that people keep that in mind.
Thank you, Mr. Orr.
November 7.
Mr. Walker? You're up.
Cut me off about 20 seconds, and then you gave me the two minutes. That's pretty brutal, dude. Jason.
Good afternoon. Mayor Protam Dominguez and members of the City Council. I did drop my ballot in the box. The ladies were very nice there. And also, there, there was, the news press needs...
Hold the mic down close to you.
Hello? The news press needs to do a little bit of proofreading. They sort of tarred the City of Santa Barbara Public Works Department with the latest county scandal, and, you know, people, I walked by on, oh, Carpinteria and Canada Street on the way down the family home on South Canada Street yesterday, and there was a crew of five or six guys redoing a sidewalk section that had uplifted, deformed, differential settlement, a tree root probably uplifted, and those guys were working hard, you know? Something like this, if you don't proofread and get your facts straight, it sort of smears people with something that shouldn't be smeared with. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Woody.
I had two extra minutes that was yielded to me.
Yes, you have four minutes.
Thank you. I've given you all a handout with a highlighted section of Title 28 of our current zoning code, and I was here last week to discuss the ADU ordinance. And one of the comments that, after reviewing the videotape of last week's meeting, I noticed that the city attorney provided an explanation on why we are currently asking for owner occupants with current ADU applications. So, I gave you a copy, the reason I gave you a copy of that section was so you could read all the other little pieces that you actually have purview and the authority to approve now. If you, if you prescribed that same logic, that you have already approved these sections, and the government code gives you the purview and the authority, why not just grab those other pieces out of that section? See, I believe that the government code was intended to supersede all the existing ordinances so we could start out with a clean slate. And so, you know, my question still stands that I never really got an answer to. Why did we choose to take the road with barriers rather than the road without barriers? I mean, no one would have ever questioned the city if they would not have required owner occupancy and, and a covenant. And I just think that that is the wrong direction to go, and it certainly wasn't the intent of the government code. The government code was mandated specifically because the city and other, not just the City of Santa Barbara, but other jurisdictions failed to meet their housing requirements. So, I would really hope that you guys would give the city administrators some direction and have them comply with the government code and have us all start out with a clean slate moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Widrow.
Members of the council, Tom Widrow, Santa Barbara City Watch. I want to thank Mayor Protam Dominguez for meeting with me to discuss, in part, the homeless issue, the State Street issue that continues to vex the City Council and cities all across the country. People on our steering committee wonder, what are possible solutions? And Councilmember Mayor Protam Dominguez asked, what can the city do? And I think it's a great question. What can we do? We actually witnessed a situation where someone was passed out not too far from the Cajun Kitchen Restaurant, and our law enforcement came by and really helped him up and sent him on his way. What some people at City Watch wonder is whether or not we're afraid, as a city, like many cities are, to go up against the ACLU, to actually take those who are what you would call gravely disabled, which is the third item which you can be institutionalized, in addition to being a harm to yourself and a harm to others, is whether or not there, you can be more aggressive, more proactive in putting these people into that 72 hours of treatment, the next 14 days of treatment if the public hearing goes well, and then 14 days after that. The thought is, is that some people will achieve some degree of lucidity and move on to connect with their families. The other thought is that those who want to stay with their addictions probably would find places that were less hospitable to that than Santa Barbara. So, it might be expensive, and we might have to, might cost money for the city to experience those lawsuits, but it also might set, send a message that what's happening on State Street isn't acceptable, and it's really infringing and abrogating other people's rights. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Colbert.
We talk a lot about the homeless problems, but we're not, I don't see us doing anything about it because, I mean, we don't have police out there really doing anything to, nothing against the police, but I mean, there's guys drinking, doing drugs, I mean, just totally out of their mind constantly every day, you know, out on the street. I mean, we're too busy building buildings and new hotels to really take notice of what's going on in our streets. And none of you guys up there support rent control. I wonder why, you know? No, I know, I want you to be mayor, Kathy, because I like you. I think you'd be a great mayor. But at the same time, we need to really think about what's going on in our city. We're too, we don't, we realize there's so many people that live here, but we just seem to be, Santa Barbara's been took away from the locals. You know, I was born here, my mother was born here. It's like, why do we even think that rich people can live here? I mean, being against rent control is not a good thing because that's, we're going to have more homeless, we're going to have more problems, which we already have. I mean, it's out of control. The homeless problem's out of control. It's just something we really need to take consideration because, I mean, it's not getting any better. The shelters are not doing their job. That's why we've got people out here drinking every day out there on State Street, everywhere. The shelters, the housing's unaffordable, we know that. You know, we got it, we got to do, we got to, rent control would help because it can at least get people who could afford to live here. You know, we've got way too many people commuting, you know? But I mean, we do, we got to do something. We're not, we're in denial about what's going on here. I mean, it's, the homeless are not going away, you know? Also, we need a new police department. That's part of my question also. The police department is almost 60 years old. We should have had one years ago. Santa Maria's got one. I mean, what are we doing here, what are we doing here in Santa Barbara? You know, there's plenty of money to have built it a long time ago, but it's just like, we need to put, we need to put aside politics and take care of priorities. That's very, very important. Whoever the next mayor is, who I hope is you, Kathy, I mean, we really need to, we really needed to, we needed to wake up here in Santa Barbara because we're in denial about the real issues that's going on, you know? Like I said, the homeless, we should take care of the homeless here in Santa Barbara. We've got people from all over the country coming here, and that's the problem, you know? But I think the shelters, you guys as the city should couple and do something, do something, you know? But I mean, we have to stop letting businesses go out of business and do something about it, you know, because, I mean, it's only going to get worse. Thank you.
Thank you. Onto the consent calendar.
I'll read items two, three, and four. Item two, adoption of ordinance for assignment of state water project contract to the Central Coast Water Authority. Recommendation, the council adopt by reading of title only and ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara approving and authorizing the execution of the Second Amendment to the water supply agreement between the City of Santa Barbara and Central Coast Water Authority, and approving and authorizing the execution of the First Amendment to the Joint Exercise of Powers Agreement creating the Central Coast Water Authority. Item three, adoption of ordinance for 2017 through 2019 Treatment and Patrol, TAP, memorandum of understanding. Recommendation, the council adopt by reading of title only and ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara adopting the 2017 through 2019 memorandum of understanding between the City of Santa Barbara and the patrol officers and treatment plants bargaining units, TAP, units. And item four, records destruction for the police department. Recommendation, the council adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara relating to the destruction of records held by the police department.
With regard to item number two, Mr. Hart?
Yeah, I did have an opportunity to speak with some friends at the county about this issue, and there definitely is a difference of opinion. I think it's legitimate, and there are, you know, respectfully different points of view about where all of this would go. I understand the position of our staff and the Central Coast Water Authority that we ought to be executing this agreement, but I personally think that I prefer the status quo. So, I will be voting against this resolution or ordinance.
Mr. White.
So, then you're asking that that be voted on separately from the rest? So, I would move approval of that item.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Yes, opposed.
So, that's five in support and one in opposition. Mr. Hart in opposition. Okay, regarding the less, the rest of the consent...
I'd move the rest of the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is that Mr. Hotchkiss has a second?
Yes.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? That concludes the consent calendar. Report from the Finance Committee.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The Finance Committee met and discussed the first quarter investment report and fiscal agent report, and unanimously recommended that the council approve the reports.
Thank you very much. City Council administrative and attorney reports? Nothing at this time. So, item number 11.
Item 11, reducing the use of expanded polystyrene food containers within the City of Santa Barbara.
Good afternoon. I'm Renee Ierly, Environmental Services Manager from Finance Department, and today I will be taking you through a presentation to discuss the status of expanded polystyrene foam management around the state and some of our options in going forward here in the City of Santa Barbara. So, staff has taken this item to the Sustainability Committee twice since May, and in August, we were referred here to bring information back for council's consideration. So, first of all, what is expanded polystyrene? It is a material that's made from oil chemicals, and it is, becomes pliable and moldable when it's heated. There are two common types of EPS that is used to make foam drink cups, clamshells, plates, trays, coolers, those sorts of light and easily handled materials. Styrofoam is a major common brand name you're probably most familiar with in reference to it. So, about 10 years ago, EPS was identified as a concern for several reasons, primarily due to litter. It is pervasive on streets. It also ends up in our local waterways and the ocean, and it is very difficult to, to recycle, and so it can become a problematic material in the waste stream as well. So, from research done around the state and nationally, 80% of ocean litter originates on land, probably not surprisingly, and about 60% of that is plastic. The state estimates that at least 3% to 9% of litter is expanded polystyrene foam by volume, and there's anywhere from 2 to 7 pounds per person per year is used. While a small overall percentage of litter is EPS by, by volume, it can have widespread impacts. State and regional water boards have recognized this and regulate trash as a pollutant in all stormwater permits now in California. The foam is light, it breaks apart, it's hard to collect, and as litter, it accumulates in landscaping and becomes an eyesore in waterways and the ocean. Birds, fish, and wildlife mistake it for food and ingest it. Here in Santa Barbara, we spend a significant amount of effort cleaning our waterways. Though currently, we don't collect information specifically on EPS, qualitatively, we do have observations of it out in our waterways. For example, the waterfront cleans their harbor every other Saturday to reduce litter, and they regularly collect plastic trash as part of that process. The Creeks Division collected over 84,000 pounds of trash last fiscal year. EPS foam was found at 11% of the total cleanups around town. From a garbage and recycling perspective, EPS foam, again, is, it's a small fraction of the waste stream. Volumetrically, it's not considered a landfill problem, per se, but it's very difficult to recycle. It is difficult to handle, is, it's expensive, the machinery is expensive, and there's a high contamination rate to the material. We wanted to get more information on the use of EPS foam food containers and its use around Santa Barbara. So, our recycling and recovery team surveyed each of the 375 food-serving businesses in town. So, this is a map of the distribution of those restaurants about town. And then what we found is that by business, 30% are still using at least one type of EPS foam food container, and those are identified by the red tags on this map. So, I'd say overall, the city has a good voluntary conversion to alternative products already, and it's likely that we've hit a threshold without additional incentive. So, this chart shows, of the to-go material types that were surveyed, 14% were the EPS foam found in, found in the restaurants. And then of those EPS foam containers, the vast majority are either cups or clamshells for takeout. And of the 111 businesses found to still be using these types of containers, again, probably not surprisingly, they're the ones that are serving more of the hot soups and saucy and kind of messy foods. I think while it's preferable to have a statewide solution, six attempts since 2007 so far have fallen short in the legislature. This past spring, SB 705, came the closest to passing. It, it fell six votes short. The bill, as currently amended, would phase in implementation over several years, giving smaller vendors longer time to come into compliance. It would exempt schools and state hospitals, and it also included a hardship exemption process for those who found it to be financially prohibitive to be able to convert. That in particular is one of the biggest hurdles that the earlier bills had had, and that has been dealt with quite often at the local level as well to, to bring, to bring people along. So, SB 745 right now is on hold, and it can't be reconsidered until 2018. So, similar to the single-use bag ban, local communities continue to take the lead on restricting EPA foam use. There are 111 jurisdictions so far in California that are restricting its use. Proponents of a statewide solution anticipate that more interest in Sacramento will be elevated if there are at least a few more cities that move forward with an ordinance locally. Just in the last month, Long Beach has passed an ordinance, North Lake Tahoe has also approved a study in moving forward on an ordinance, and both LA City and County are considering ordinances as well. Regionally, both Carpinteria and Santa Monica were early adopters. Carpinteria, right now, is considering expanding their ordinance to include retail as well in addition to restaurants, and they are the only other jurisdiction in Santa Barbara County to have an ordinance. So, around the state, local programs do show a direct correlation between an EPS ordinance implementation and reduction in EPS foam litter. Up to 74% reduction was found in multiple cities around the Bay Area. Over the last 10 years, there are numerous outlets for paper or plastic alternatives to be able to purchase them, and in fact, the two largest container producers in the country now make alternatives to EPS foam. For businesses, concerns about converting to plastic or compostable containers include the potential cost increases or the ability to retain temperature and food quality. I think both of these issues can be addressed with more information on the performance and the competitive costs of the alternatives. For example, now that there are, the market is, is really so large, especially in California, for cups, they're, they're essentially the same cost whether you're, you're purchasing the foam or the, the plastic or, or paper cups. And clamshell containers run in the 2 to 4 cent range comparison. For the city, were we to move forward with an ordinance, our ongoing costs would, and one-time costs would be comparable to what we incurred for the single-use bag ban. We would need to do some sort of environmental review, and then there's ongoing oversight and implementation of the ordinance. So, as I said, there are at least theoretically like two options if you choose to, to manage expanded polystyrene. One is recycling, and the other is to create some sort of reduction ordinance. And regarding recycling, there are no cost-effective or ongoing programmatic sustainable means to, to recycle it. As I mentioned before, there's a high contamination rate, and the equipment cost is incredibly expensive. In fact, New York City recently completed an extensive study which determined that the, there's essentially no market for the material, and the costs are really prohibitive in, to attempt to recycle the material. So, if the city were to move forward with ordinance development, key elements would need to be defined, including what are the regulated activities around food services that strictly, for example, that's strictly restaurants? Would we include food carts and trucks, gas stations, public marks, those sorts of things? The second thing is, are there exceptions? Typically, certain types of food handling processes like meat trays in supermarkets, and prepackaged food that comes in from outside a jurisdiction is exempted. What would the implementation and phase in look like? Would we give a longer amount of time for smaller restaurants to come onboard? That kind of thing. Would the city want to include retail? So, that would be grocery stores that are, for example, or drugstores that are selling ice chests or single-use foam cups for backyard barbecue, that kind of thing. And then finally, the inclusion of exemptions for hardship, and that can tend to apply to smaller, independently owned venues that might have some kind of financial reason or there's no feasible alternative for them to be able to, to deliver their product. So, as any ordinance would impact... So as any ordinance would impact a significant number of businesses in the community, we'd want to continue to engage interested parties in shaping the language of this ordinance itself, getting input on the implementation timeline, and sharing information on the types, the costs, and the quality of available compostable and plastic containers. We do have several local distributors of the alternatives, and you're certainly willing to come in and host workshops and educational opportunities for those who aren't familiar with the products. So staff, we've already begun to interact with some of the affected businesses and interested parties. This is a partial list. If council directs us, we'll move forward actively to involve all key stakeholders in the development of an ordinance. And so in conclusion, we recommend the council receive the report regarding the use and environmental effects of expanded polystyrene foam and refer staff to work with the ordinance committee to consider a draft ordinance to prohibit the use of expanded polystyrene foam food containers within the city of Santa Barbara. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Any questions from council? If not, we'll move to public comment. Public comment. So Sigrid Wright, you have up to two minutes, and after Ms. Wright will be Art Tracewell.
Good afternoon, Mayor Pro temp Dominguez and members of the council. I'm Sigrid Wright. I'm the CEO of the Community Environmental Council. You're probably familiar with my program manager for plastics, Kathy King, who couldn't be here today. I want to thank you for considering an ordinance for expanded polystyrene foam, also, as you heard, known as EPS or Styrofoam. And you may know that we've been advocating for single-use plastic reduction laws for nearly a decade in an effort to reduce waste and protect our environment. And as you just heard, Styrofoam packaging, food packaging, is not recyclable and often ends up as unintentional litter. And as you've heard from me several times, you know, the cheapest way to manage any type of waste is to reduce its use, and that reduce and reuse should always come before recycle and landfill. Management of disposable packaging also meets your waste reduction strategies in your city's climate action plan. There are more than 100 Styrofoam laws in California. As you just heard, locally, Carpinteria has had a law since 2009, and the city of San Luis Obispo passed theirs in 2015. And the statewide list includes large cities such as San Jose and San Francisco, and a very long list of coastal cities, that being a particular concern to us regarding ocean waste. As you just heard, Long Beach is the most recent addition, having directed staff to prepare an ordinance just last week. And I really just want to emphasize that your leadership on waste reduction works. When the state took action on single-use plastic bags recently, it was after 200 cities had passed laws restricting their distribution. So perhaps by stepping forward, we can unstick that problem that you just heard about that not happening at the state level. And we believe that will also be true with Styrofoam, and that we can achieve local momentum with your help. We've collected nearly 100 of these postcards from concerned community members that I would like to share with you. We've also done outreach to local organizations and businesses and forwarded several support letters to you. These included Backyard Bowls, Juice Ranch, Loa Tree, Five Gyres, and the UCSB Chancellor's Sustainability Committee. I want to read you a quote from Dan Goddard, who's the co-founder of Backyard Bowls. And he says, "There are plenty of alternatives to expanded polystyrene on the market at minimal or no increased cost for the buyer. This is an obvious means of lightening a business's impact without negatively impacting their bottom line." He also says, "We support a local foam ban ordinance that is good for the environment and good for business. We are proud to be at the forefront of this beneficial change and appreciate your consideration of this ordinance." So we're grateful to be working with you on this and the Sustainability Committee, and ask that you make a motion to provide an update and initiate an ordinance by asking council to refer to the ordinance committee for development.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Tracewell, and then Penny Owens.
Hi. I want to start by saying that we made the move to plastic from foam voluntarily because we thought it was the right thing for the environment. And we knew that we were going to have some degradation of product. In the smoothies, they melt faster in plastic. We knew that was coming. We even made koozies, and we were saying, okay, let's do this. It's the right thing to do. Subsequently, since we made the move, China stopped. Are you guys all aware of what's going on with China and how they've stopped taking US plastics? So plastic cups are no longer recycled. They are in the same category as Styrofoam, which is, they're both recyclable, but neither one are done it because there's no market for either one of them. So that felt weird to make that move, and I understand the trash and the floating piece. But anyway, we made the move. The list of complaints, I'm going to hand you a list of complaints that is just a sampling of the hundreds we've gotten, or maybe in the thousands. It's been quite overwhelming, and it's been real negative impact on my business. Because of this, we're looking at going back into foam, and some of the things we need to consider are cradle-to-grave environmentally. Foam is better than a lot of those options, like those plastic Starbucks cup over there that uses, that's got a worse environmental footprint than foam does, but no one wants to ban that. I think we're giving the false impression that we're doing something when you ban foam, because none of the cups are recycled. They're all going into the landfill. It doesn't break up into the pieces like everyone says it does. Foam cups, packing do and coolers do, but a Styrofoam cup that's made to hold liquid will tear, but I do pick up on the highway, and I know that it doesn't do what everyone says it does. It's, by the way, more expensive for us to move back to foam. So it's kind of a wash, but it's more expensive to be in foam than it is for plastic, but I'm willing to pay that because it's hurting my business. I got a list of 11 or 12 businesses that sent letters, along with my letter. Can I hand that to someone? They couldn't be here because they're...
Penny Owens.
Yeah, I have a question for you, sir. Come on back up. Come up to the microphone for a second. What was the nature of your customer complaints?
Let's see. Everything from, "I'm never coming back," to because of, "They melt faster." Hello? Wondering why you made the change in cups and bowls? I go to Blenders every day, and the new cups melt faster. I can't come to your store anymore because it melts within six blocks. You got them all right here.
What, the cup itself dissolves? Is that what they're saying?
No. It doesn't insulate like Styrofoam does, so you put a smoothie in a plastic cup, by the time you get to the street...
It's liquid.
It's liquid. Yeah. I mean, you feel it on your hand, and that's the transference of heat.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Penny Owens, please come up. After that is Cara, looks like statal, stational.
Good afternoon, Mayor Pro temp and council members. Penny Owens with Santa Barbara Channel Keeper. Channel Keeper is regularly in the creeks and rivers sampling, conducting beach and creek cleanups with community groups, and educating students about the impacts of single-use plastics and the environment. We're also out on the water on our research boat, patrolling the channel, and we witnessed firsthand the extent of plastic pollution. And unfortunately, I've personally found many Blenders cups, along with many other Styrofoam, small bits and pieces on the creeks and in the beaches. An example of some of the beach litter we've seen is at East Beach after a rain event last year. We had our volunteers pick up more than 4,100 pieces, small pieces, of Styrofoam, and I think that had to do with the rain event that was just before that. And as we heard from the others, in the staff report, foam has significant impacts on the environment. More than 111 jurisdictions in California have banned polystyrene foam products. 21 of those jurisdictions, many of them coastal communities, have also included a ban on the retail sale of foam products such as ice chests and prepackaged plates. Foam bans are an important tool that can help municipalities to meet their stormwater permit requirements, to reach compliance with the state's zero trash policy. Many local businesses, as we heard, and organizations have already submitted letters of support for a local foam ban. One restaurant wasn't able to be here today. It's Moni's Mexican Food down in the Funk Zone. Makes a mean taco. They do a lot of to-go business, and I wanted to share with you their support for a local foam ban. At Moni's, we take pride in being a local family business. Moni's has already moved away from using foam containers, and while there is a slight increase in cost, we consider this a small price to pay to align with our values as a small, environmentally-friendly business. Channel Keeper is also conducting education and outreach to the community. We have a stack of postcards, along with CEC and Save the Mermaids, and we would be happy to assist with education efforts ahead of a local foam ban. Channel Keeper respectfully urges that the city of Santa Barbara support an ordinance banning EPS food service products. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Cara.
Hi, council members. I'm Kaioa with Save the Mermaids. I'm on the beach almost every day with kids, and what we do off East Beach and West Beach is play in the ocean and have a lot of fun. Every single day, we find pieces of Styrofoam. As Blenders was saying, yes, it doesn't just break down in your hand. How it works is it breaks down by photo degradation, so it breaks down with light. So if you put it on the beach or in our oceans, it's going to start breaking down like that, which is one of the main problems that we have. We also have the gyre, which he was mentioning. We've got our own Santa Barbara Channel Gyre. You know, gyres are between bodies of land. And if you go out to the Santa Barbara Islands, the islands out there, you can always find pieces of trash, and a lot of them are Styrofoam-based, and I see them all the time. We've got a lot of endemic species out there, which I find really important to just mention as well, so the effects that we have every single day here also affect them. My husband also owns Channel Islands Outfitters and the Harbor Paddle Sports Center in the harbor, and it does affect tourism when you're going out in the water and you see Styrofoam, when you're out in the water kayaking or paddle boarding. So I think that's an important note to make. There's several restaurants that I've spoken in the last five years that have actually changed their products, including The Brew House and South Coast Deli, who have changed their products from Styrofoam products to products that are biodegradable. So I know that it's possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Bonnie Raisn. I have a family member, a close family member, who has two companies, and they manufacture the, well, we used to call them biodegradable, but they manufacture the kind of products from grass and whatever else. They have two plants in China, which they hope to bring back to the United States. And so, you know, we're all well-aware of the potential, and I've heard cost mentioned. And my feeling is that a small businessman, or, you know, I don't know what the depth of the sales force is for a company like my son's, but it's not every small business is going to be visited and told about the options, nor do I believe that more businesses would have switched had it been viable for them to do so cost-wise. So I think we have to be very careful about an ordinance that punishes someone who is not up to speed. I'm sure time would be given, but I don't like anything that restricts business options for a business individual. I was in business for myself for a long, long time, and every time a new mandate came down from Sacramento, the Board of Realtors, you know, it was bound to affect either the buyer or the transfer of property. So I just think you have to be really careful about this. Somebody coming into town, buying a business, you know, we don't have the kind of climate now that is that, how should I say it? It's not that lucrative for many small businesses. So I'd be careful about this ordinance. I would definitely give lots of notice before passing something like this. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Deanna. How are you guys today? Everyone needs a little shaking up a bit, I think. How many times have you told someone that you're from Santa Barbara, and the first thing they say is, "Oh, my God, I love Santa Barbara." That's usually every single person's response, that I tell them I'm from this beautiful place. And unfortunately, when I take tourists out on bike rides on our electric bicycles, we are constantly running into so much trash that is located primarily around State Street and the high tourist areas. This does not leave that beautiful Santa Barbara feel on a person when they come to visit our beautiful town. I think that we have made tremendous strides in the right direction for leading by example and making things unavailable for people who are not aware or environmentally as conscious as our wonderful town is. People are using, the bowl signed up and is giving people reusable cups when they go get their, you know, their beer concert, or their concert beers. You know, we made the ban against plastic bags, so we're not seeing plastic bags being handled, like, you know, just passed around like it's waves that we should be seeing on the side of the street. We have an opportunity here, especially that we're having so many hotels come into this community. We are going to have a huge influx of tourists in our town, and we deserve and owe our beautiful town the right to not see plastic and see Styrofoam all over the place. If we remove Styrofoam from even being an option, it opens up the conversation and the awareness for people to realize how detrimental and how awful Styrofoam really is to our environment. Most people have no idea the negative effects of plastic, and the fact that we're not handing, hopefully, you know, as time goes on, we're not handing out plastic utensils, we're not giving them plastic straws, and people start to be aware of their decisions and how it affects our environment. So as a small business owner, we are in full support of banning Styrofoam. Thank you.
Thank you. Now it's to the council. Mr. Hart.
Well, I think this is long overdue, and I appreciate the input from the gentleman from Blenders. That is, you know, you had experience, really appreciate that you took the initiative to make a switch, and unfortunately, you're getting some negative feedback from customers. I think this is unfortunately part of the process of working through that, that we're going to have to let people know with an even playing field where everybody's in the same situation, that this product, these products are not environmentally friendly, and we need to kind of deal with that. And I think that, you know, a lot of the concern that was expressed initially about the single-use bandbag has not proven to be a real threat to anybody's lifestyle or business. And, you know, that is the challenge to always, is to how to push environmental concerns forward and be sensitive to the impacts on folks at the same time. But you can't stop making progress because there are going to be impacts on certain individual business operations. We have to adapt as customers. We have to reward folks who are trying to do the right thing, and appreciate that Blenders is doing that. I think you will find a solution to that. Your creativity and the success of your business demonstrates that you know how to do that, and you're going to work on that, I'm sure. But I think that it's time for the city of Santa Barbara to again assert our leadership as environmental stewards in the community and in the country, and to take a leadership role on issues like this. And I hope this won't be the last thing like this we need to do. We're going to have another item on the agenda later today, but I think this is the right time to move forward on this ordinance.
Ms. Maria.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Ms. Ierle, you didn't talk about the possibility of asking the consumer to pay maybe 10 cents or 25 cents for a non-Styrofoam container? That's a possibility, right? So I'm looking at some of the letters here, and the concern was it would add costs to take away food?
Thank you, Mayor. And council member, Maria. That's correct. I did not bring up that as an option. Were council wanting to move forward with this? That's something we could explore. That is a novel approach to this container, you know, issue. I've not heard of that being used in other jurisdictions as well, but it's certainly something that we could look into. But you're right, because generally, in other jurisdictions, that cost is just passed through directly to the consumer.
Okay. And I wanted to acknowledge the Blenders owners' concern, and I know you have the reusable cups, and I will certainly get one myself, and I'm wondering if there's people who regularly drink your smoothies who are right around your store, that they can bring their cup back. And I know we're trying to train ourselves not to use throwaway cups, and maybe your ... And maybe your customers don't know that the reason for this is the degradation of our marine environment. And maybe if they, if they knew that. So I would support this going forward, especially if there's a nice, long lead time so people can transition. Ms. Raisen, that was a really good point, that people need to transition to something that's new, let their customers know that there's something new coming. And then, of course, leave open the possibility for a hardship application if that's appropriate. I just think about the future of our ocean. And people are saying the ocean's already dead. I don't want to believe that. I think there's still hope for us with ocean farming, with reduction of pollution. We're working hard on that, and we have to keep an eye on, on the future. Our fishing industry, our tourism industry, it's all, it's all part of that. And I'm an ocean swimmer, and I'd like to take care of our, our marine environment. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
Thank you, sir. Staff, why has a measure to prohibit styrofoam failed six times in the legislature?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Hotchkiss. The previous times, I would say they had, one, it was much earlier, you know, over the past 10 years, much earlier in the process. So there was a greater differential in the cost between the alternative containers and the styrofoam containers, if you will. And that was a major concern by the legislature. They are certainly also well lobbied by the American Chemical Society and also DART Container, who have been big, major proponents of continuing to have the EPS foam container market. So I think those have been the two drivers. And obviously, over time, the costs have come down and made them comparable. And this time around, it, it appears that it was still, it was a close vote. And there were some of these more last-minute amendments that I referred to in terms of, like, incorporating the hardship exemption and also looking at a longer lead time, like actually giving until 2020 for large restaurants, and then until 2022 for smaller vendors to, to come on board with the ordinance. And unfortunately, those were, I think, added on too late in the process. That's why they're hoping when they bring the legislation back in 2018, they will have the votes this time.
So why is styrofoam so widely used worldwide and nationwide?
It's, because it has historically been cheap to use. It is, it is sturdy when it's first made, and it, and it does have very good insulated properties, which, I mean, obviously is a big attraction for, for those in the, in the food industry.
For instance, a lot of grocery packaging, particularly frozen items, includes styrofoam. Is the proposal to eliminate that?
Excuse me, for packaged food or for meats that are in grocery stores?
Both.
Right now, that, no, this, we do not contemplate that. And I don't, I'm not familiar with another ordinance that also addresses those, partly because most, much of that food is packaged elsewhere and brought into a jurisdiction and/or there, you know, sometimes safety issues for grand flow around meat. It makes it easier to contain the fluids.
And fish, yeah. So this doesn't contemplate involving that packaging at all?
No.
You mentioned that this is like 11% of litter. What's the other 90%?
In the Kriegs? Well, a lot of, I would say a lot of this, would you like to refer to that?
I don't know.
No. Well, based on the studies that I've seen, a large percentage is otherwise plastic. You can end up with 60, 70% of plastic bottles, food wrappers, those sorts of things. They tend to be the majority overall of the litter.
Yeah, I worry a little bit that bad because one of the actually speakers mentioned plastic, is that they want to get rid of plastic. Would this be a first step towards getting rid of plastic?
I think we don't know that yet. That would be a conversation that we would have to have.
It's not a conversation I would like to have. Seems to me that free market choice is better here, as Blenders has made and may be again, and that that should be, what, 70% of our restaurants have already made that choice. And they should, it should be 100% choice. One thing worries me a little bit about, you know, when we talk about State Street, vacancies there, and when speakers come up and say, well, we, you know, it's not, we're not a business-friendly city. And I don't really believe that. But every time we do a regulation like this, another entity competing for retailers to come could point and say, see, there's Santa Barbara's one, one more regulation that's unnecessary because it affects so little of the waste stream and just makes life a little bit more difficult for new businesses. So I think would be a bad idea to actually put this forward. I would rather say that we could point out some of the effects of styrofoam, but some of the benefits also, and leave it up to people on both sides, retailers and consumers, to make the decision themselves.
Mr. White?
Thank you, Mayor. My question would be the comment that Mr., in response, to add on to the comments from the gentleman from Blenders about plastic cups now. Can you, if we don't get an update now on that, it would be interesting for the decision-makers, Sustainability Committee and council, to learn about the status of the plastic cups and how that, that market is. I appreciate that the markets are in constant flux, but for us to know how that's unfolding, I think, is an important ingredient. So, but I would say, and by way of comment, that I agree with Mr. Hart's comments. This is just one of those areas where we're long overdue, and we need to move forward. It's, I know there's, there's pain involved in change, but again, sustainability is, is a watchword of, of our general plan. And this is an implementing policy I would see as just part of our plan in Santa Barbara.
Mr. Rouse?
Thank you. So when we discussed this in Sustainability Committee, one of the recommendations we gave to staff was to staff work in earnest to provide lists of alternative materials, costs, providers, particularly to all the businesses, the small businesses that'll be affected. I know in my own personal experience, we found alternatives, and that was actually driven by customer preference. That, you know, at one point in time, there weren't the great alternatives. And the alternatives are, in fact, more expensive. But when your customer feedback tells you to do something, you generally tend to follow I am very concerned about the situation with the Blenders Company. They are a high-profile and very, you know, benign source of publicity in this town. And what they do and what they don't do, I think, is important to this entire issue. And I would really encourage staff to work in earnest, as well as the organizations like CEC and all that, directly with Blenders, to see if there isn't a viable alternative out there. I don't think they're doing it just willy-nilly. I think there's a very serious issue here, and it involves a lot of people, a lot of employees, in a very small, not a small, but a very successful local business. So in agreeing with Mr. Hotchkiss, we don't want to choke off a business just to make a point. I'm also curious why this hasn't passed at the state level. We went through this with the plastic bag thing as well. Certainly, this would be better handled regionally than it is city by city. I don't like just to put the good housekeeping seal approval on us just so to say we did something. However, I do think this is coming. The gentleman from Blenders did point out some of these other alternatives aren't exactly landfill-friendly either, and he's actually correct. I mean, things that we're going through, the changing world of recycling and whatnot, it isn't always a pretty story. Reusables don't necessarily work in the to-go food industry. There's a lot of downfall with that. There's a lot of reasons why you don't do that. We're going to them now in case anybody just ate. But I think we should go ahead and send this to ordinance committee. I think that it should be something carefully considered with a very serious amortization period for those who have those products. But I really want to see staff outreach and research into those alternatives. And I'd love to see some, some really earnest work with the Blenders Company, because I do think that's an important local company. We don't want to go out of our way to hurt what they've got going on now. So that would be my, my take on this.
Thank you. I have a question about the, the plastic that's being used in what I'm assuming is the large majority of the alternative situations. Is there any way to have that recycled, or is it just currently not being recycled by our vendors?
Thank you, Mayor Parkham. The, the drink cups that are, are plastic, they, they are recyclable, and they are recycled if they're put into the proper containers, obviously. What, partly what Mr. Trace was referring to is that the markets have tightened up, largely because of, of China and their, their change in policy. So contamination levels are being looked at much more stringently. We, along with our partners with Marborg and with the county, have been working with them and, and our brokers. And we still have a market for our materials. And that, and also being said, our Marborg, and then also Gold Coast, who does some of our processing, are changing their processes to actually ensure that our shipments are meeting those contamination standards. So that's sort of a long answer to say that right now, the, the plastic is recyclable as long as it's not dirty. We're still educating people that they do need to do some kind of wipe or rinse out of the plastics, but we do have a market for them.
Thank you very much. I am, of course, more interested in multi-use and how we eliminate the, the plastic up in this process. And again, hopefully, our residents and our businesses will do it voluntarily and by choice, and, and encourage their fellow residents to do so. The fact that 70% of our businesses have already moved that direction is very, very encouraging, very exciting. And I think part of the problem is you get to the tail end, and there's just an outreach or information gap, and it takes a while to get that last bit. It's part of the 80/20 rule. So I'm very excited about this and excited to see the ordinance committee deal with this. Mr. Hart?
I'd make a motion to direct staff to work with the ordinance committee to advance an ordinance to prohibit the use of expanded polystyrene foam containers within the City of Santa Barbara.
Second?
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. White. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
No.
So 5-1 with Mr. Hotchkiss opposed. Item number 12.
Item 12, Cabrillo Pavilion donor recognition guidelines and naming opportunities.
Ms. Zachary?
Mayor Dominguez, Members of the City Council, Jill Zachary, Parks and Recreation Director. I have a presentation today that's quite similar to what you heard in June. I'd like to walk through it because we have moved forward with more work related to the Cabrillo Pavilion renovation. As we all well know, and it's always often a good idea to remind ourselves, that the city is very fortunate that David Gray 90 years ago constructed this building and dedicated it for park purposes and public recreation. For the last four years, we have been developing our renovation plan, and our objectives with that plan are to maintain its historic integrity, yet at the same time achieve much-needed building systems, structural and interior upgrades, so that we can provide a modern community center for Santa Barbara's future generations. After 90 years of being well-loved and well-used, it's time for a significant renovation to move this building so that it can continue to serve the community. Our goal is at least 75 more years. That's where we've started, and if it's another 90, that's even better. So where we are today is we initiated our capital campaign in July of 2017, and we're moving forward with coming with our proposal to award a bid in November with the idea that we are going to move forward with construction beginning in January of next year. The building is scheduled to close after formal business is completed on December 31st, A key aspect of this project has always been conducting a campaign, reaching out to public, private opportunities within the Santa Barbara community to support renovation of a significant community building. To that end, work that has, that began in July has moved forward at a, at a good pace. We formed our campaign leadership team, and I'd like to acknowledge that three of our team members, co-chair, tri-chair, Sue Adams, Mary Louise Days, and Dr. Herb Barthels are here in the audience. And they've been tremendous in moving our leadership campaign team forward. Also, Steve Wilmot, who is part of the consulting team that's supporting the city and the Park Foundation's efforts to move forward with the campaign, is here and available to answer any questions that you might have. Key to moving forward is also developing gift acceptance guidelines, particularly how donors will be recognized, and even more particularly, what type of naming opportunities might be considered for this building. That's something that we learned through our feasibility study. It's a key objective for individuals. They want to leave a legacy for their family or something that they're interested in. It's also something that we see foundations are interested in, in being acknowledged for their gifts to the community. Given that this is a very popular community building, it also has the opportunity to really demonstrate that recognition over time. We've also been moving forward with developing our campaign outreach materials. They're currently at the printer. We expect to have them back next week. And with council's consideration today of naming opportunities and those materials, and additional work that we've done to identify donor prospects, we'll be moving forward full-tilt with the campaign in November. We've begun to conduct site tours and developing fundraising events, and then also, as I indicated, identifying donor prospects. So donor recognition guidelines, they are included in your council packet. They clarify the types of gifts to be accepted, the procedures for receiving those gifts, the timing and method of acknowledging donors, and opportunities for naming, including the manner of recognition, the parameters and the duration. So an actual agreement is put forth and entered into by a potential donor. And in this case, it would also be under the auspices of the Park Foundation, is the nonprofit foundation that will be receiving funds on behalf of the project and also the city. There are a number of aspects to an agreement that relate to the terms of that agreement, the length of the agreement, and reasons why it might change over time, whether it's from a donor's perspective or from the city or the Park Foundation's perspective. Naming considerations, as we presented to council back in June, the building name history is key to considering moving forward with this renovation. Was gifted by David Gray, and it was gifted with the stipulation that it shall be known as the Cabrillo Pavilion. At the same time, there are a number of concepts for donor recognition that would allow for donor gifts, yet not compete with or in any way affect the name of the history. We'll walk through very briefly exterior areas, interior areas, ones that are prominent and visible, and that are tasteful and complement the building. I would add that, that both the Park Foundation Board and our campaign leadership team have reviewed the guidelines and recommended that we bring them to you today, and then also reviewed the concepts for naming and essentially the locations. And some of the considerations, and we'll go into those a little bit more, again, going to the building name, is also how it's done, and both on the interior and the exterior, that it be tasteful, that it not be extensive, that be in keeping with the design of the building. Looking back over history, the building name- Looking back over history, the building name has changed based on uses and community sentiment. And these years provide some examples where, for example, in 1962, it was called the Cabrillo Youth Center. Right before then, the upstairs had actually been leased to the Native Sons of the Golden West and the Recreation Department, Recreation Commission came forward and said, hey, we need it back for a youth center. So that's what happened. And then again, it became the Cabrillo Art Center in 1977 when it was no longer that popular for a youth center and was transitioned more into an arts and social center that it serves for so many years. Today, it's named the Cabrillo Pavilion Art Center. It's also known as the Cabrillo Bath House. People have different ways of relating to the building, so they call it different things. This is a discussion that has had a lot of back and forth with various stakeholders and interested parties and there's significant consideration that the importance and the legacy of David Gray be continued and that, as you can see in the dedication document that's part of your attached package, there is a real desire to return simply to the name Cabrillo Pavilion and to do that within the context of the other naming opportunities that we would propose. So as I mentioned, there are exterior and interior opportunities at both the pavilion level, which is the level that faces Cabrillo Boulevard, as well as the bath house level, which is what faces East Beach. Just to briefly orient council and anyone in the audience, Cabrillo Boulevard is here to the north, so there is the entrance to the pavilion here. And with the renovation, we will be constructing a terrace, an entry terrace that actually is a place where people will want to wait and greet their friends, their family, whoever they're meeting to go into the building. And then going down sort of on the west side and on the east side, the way we are proposing the renovation, it provides for a number of different entries. In the north, there's actually going to be a northeast service walkway and an entry into the lower section of the building, which will provide access to an elevator, to the restaurant area and the bath house level. And then similarly, on the east side, which was once the entry to the men's shower locker facility, that will be restored and that's an entry plaza area. Later on, you'll hear me speak about a barbecue, outdoor barbecue area. That's in this location. As you head south along the east side, this location shows where we're going to be installing a beach boardwalk, which is a new amenity, which will improve access for people with limited mobility to actually get out and enjoy the beach environment. And then to the right, you can see where our existing playground is, which is the former saltwater wading pool. The promenade along here will change slightly in width because we're extending out the portico, which is the covered porch area. And then over on the west side, there's the, essentially, it goes to the west parking lot and that's the access ramp up to the upper area. So the entrance to the pavilion, again, this is a rendition that KBZ, our architects that are working on this project, did to give a sense of when we're done this project, it will look just the same, just a lot better. And it is in keeping with the historic integrity of the building. A lot of discussion about if there was anything at the front of the building that involved a name, where would it appropriately be? And a desire not to put something actually on the face of the building, but that perhaps a monument sign would be an opportunity for an exterior naming opportunity. Down at the public promenade and bath house level, which also gets a tremendous amount of walk traffic, beach traffic, any number of activities that occur, there is support for exterior locations and I'll walk through those very briefly, whether they are along the promenade wall in this location, whether they're up near the bath house entry, and then, as I mentioned before, the beach boardwalk. Monument and directional signs provide an opportunity to acknowledge both the location of different aspects of the building and entries. And what we've learned is that naming an entry provides an opportunity to orient the visitor to where they're going. Enter on the east, the such-and-such at the lifeguard so-and-so. At the bath house, again, it gives people a sense of orientation. Sometimes we get questions of, well, which entry am I going to? Ideally, perhaps through naming that will help support that. And then also as our materials go out, as we market the building and the activities and the services that we provide at the building. As I mentioned, at the beach level, there are opportunities to look at. These are the three entrances that'll go into the main lobby area as an opportunity for naming. And then over on the east entry, as I mentioned as well, this will head into, there'll be our lifeguard sports storage here, a multipurpose room over here, and then a hallway that goes into the bath house level. On the left side, it has your sense of actually along the low wall, we will have lights that run along the promenade and this low wall provides an opportunity where perhaps scented or painted facing the building would be a place to acknowledge a donor's gift toward the renovation of the project, of the building. This gives you another sense of looking down on the promenade. If you can imagine, the building is here and the beach is here. This low wall along here is what people will face. On this side, there will also be a low wall, but that is essentially because it will serve the accessible ramp that will provide access up to the portico level. Through the project, we're actually bringing out the portico, as I mentioned. What that allows, eight feet, what that allows us to do is to put accessible ramps on the east and west side of the building so that you can easily get access to the bath house level, which currently is not compliant today. And then at the beach level, we have some ballards. Those will be replaced with swing gates. This design, this rendition, which KBZ prepared as part of going through our design review process, shows that there's an opportunity to actually provide a naming opportunity, a name here. We have East Beach in Santa Barbara in order to show Historic Landmarks Commission the design and what our idea was and get their concurrence with the approach. I would add that any signage on the building, once we've completed this process, would go back to the sign committee for review and approval in terms of locations and size and materials and that aspect. At the interior level, this gives you an orientation of the upstairs, the pavilion, A being the entry. We're restoring the original entry lounge, so there will no longer be a separate conference room and staff offices. This is our special event room, C. And you'll see in the attachment to your council report, it talks about these different rooms. D is the portion of the terrace that's enclosed. As part of the renovation, we will be renovating that and actually changing its size slightly to restore original windows. And then H, let's see where it is, H and I are the exterior east and west terraces, which will be enlarged as a result of changing the enclosure and actually provide a much more usable outdoor space at that level. Again, another opportunity that might be a naming for someone who wanted to have a name on the east terrace or the west terrace. And then at the bath house level, which is really undergoing major renovation and complete change in the floor plan, B represents the lobby or restoring the original lobby configuration. A is our large multipurpose room. Currently, for those of us that remember what it's like today, we have three staff offices in this location and a 1970s gym in the back location. So that will be one large room. C is our reception office area. D, a small multipurpose room, which will be accessed off the lobby. And then the shower locker facilities, F and G, are located here and the family changing rooms are located here. Our interior elevator is J and then the hallway leads down to a multipurpose, the medium multipurpose size room with our storage facility here. These two rooms are the existing restrooms that are access, public restrooms from the exterior. Those will be renovated as well as part of the project. And then, as I mentioned, the portico will expand. If you remember the columns that we have here, it'll come out eight feet and so that will be its size. Beach boardwalk, essentially entrance, and then here's the barbecue area. So what we are here today is to ask council to approve the donor recognition guidelines and naming opportunities, authorize the city administrator to enter into agreements and partnership with the Park Foundation as we move forward with our capital campaign, and then also recommend that we preserve the building name Cabrillo Pavilion as dedicated by David Gray. Once the building's done and reopens, that's what would be painted on the entrance at Cabrillo Boulevard. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
Thank you. It looks to me like we've got like 30 different naming opportunities here. I'm just trying to throw that together good. Am I about right? So how do we end up not looking like a NASCAR race car, you know, with different names and stuff everywhere? And we, you know, I'm sorry to be pejorative here, but it just occurred to me that we could be doing a little too much. Maybe Sue or somebody wants to talk, they have good taste, but I'd like to know what their input is.
Mayor Dominguez, Councilmember Hotchkiss, there is a lot of sensitivity to that, that it does need to be tasteful and not overwhelming. And I would ask Mr. Wilmont if he has anything else to add. One thing that we have also discussed is that it's rare that every single naming opportunity is exercised by donors, depending on their desire of the location. So it gives us a menu that may not be completely filled as part of the fundraising campaign. As far as exterior locations are concerned, I don't have any examples in a photograph, but the idea that something that would be painted, that the font size would not be enormous, it would be very tasteful and not in multiple locations. So it might be one location that a particular name occurred, not in, on three different walls in a row, for example.
Well, for sure, we want consistency with font and center. But anyway, I'd like to hear more about that if you all have probably thought about that.
Mr. Hart?
By somebody, were they, can I make a presentation? Okay, I'll wait.
Any other questions from council? If not, we'll move to public comment.
Mr. Mayor, this is our consultant in response to Mr. Hotchkiss's question.
Would you like to respond?
Yeah, my name is Steve Wilmont. I'm with Nessel Grigsby Associates, so we are the partners in the fundraising part. And I just wanted to describe to you that Jill makes a perfect point. We like to have a number of opportunities to offer, but we offer them specifically and strategically to specific donors and it's almost never the case in a campaign that they all get used. The second piece is that most of what you've seen are interior naming opportunities on portions of the facility. And you might think about it in terms of what you see when you go to a university or a hospital, where you see a small entry at the door that says provided by or from the good graces of, that kind of a thing. They would be small and thematic and fit into the decor of the facility, not a race car or an advertising billboard. And that's all part of the design when you get to a next stage of architecture and interior design and you make sure that the naming opportunities are actually a part of the building and not an add-on to it.
Yeah, if I may, just as an example, you've probably thought of this yourself, Galita Valley Cottage Hospital does a wonderful job, very tasteful. And I think New Cancer Center does something similar.
And the children's library here did a really great job with their naming opportunities too. So those are the kind of models that this project will follow.
Great, thank you.
Okay, on to public comment. Mary Louise Days?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm very honored to be a member of the Campaign Cabinet, such a fancy name for this wonderful project. The building certainly needs restoration and rehabilitation especially. It was, I grew up on East Beach. So the buildings is, and the stoa and the remains of the swimming pool are very important to me. My grandfather worked for Mr. Gray, that's what I was told, that he worked for Mr. Gray at the bath house. So that was probably during those five years when Mr. Gray operated it all. I have some misgivings about the naming opportunities and the putting little signs in many places, but the one that I really have a problem with is the very first one, which says exterior pavilion entry on Cabrillo Boulevard. That would be the main door. And I have expressed this in our meetings. We have really, very commendable donor recognition guidelines, a lot of work on the part of the Park Foundation and the department. But the, I really, this is a public building. It was given to the city residents and property owners. It was not, it's not a nonprofit headquarters. It belongs to the city. I really cannot go along with putting even any size name right near the front door. The name Cabrillo Pavilion was granted by, required by Mr. Gray and I think back around 1990 or 91, Louise Lowery Davis and I made an appearance at city council, objecting to what the department had repainted it to say Cabrillo Arts Pavilion, or Cabrillo Arts Center, rather. And we came and said, well, Mr. Gray named it Cabrillo Pavilion. So they did insert the word pavilion. They left in Arts Center. So it will really be good to have it go back to its original name. That's all been agreed upon. But, and we are going to try to really use discretion on the location, on the exteriors. The, it would be the highest-priced donors who would get the actual, that type of room or entrance privilege. But again, I just would express that I really do not approve of attempting to put a name on the front, on or near the outside of the front entrance. Alternatives are being looked at, as Jill Zachary has mentioned, and there may be some other, if we really get a high-priced donation for something on the, elsewhere on the exterior. There are two plaques, one to David Gray. It's on the beach side of the bath house floor. And there's going to be an attempt to remove that, it's bronze, to remove it very carefully and store it and replace it. I hope that when all of you make your different tours, you will see that. There was also one that I remember seeing on the stoa, the temple fixture. It was in memory of Frederick Forrest Peabody. It was partly given by his widow. And it would be nice if we could find that, whatever became of it or replace it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ready for comments. Mr. White?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, a couple of things. First of all, I want to appreciate the trio that is stepping up to lead this campaign. This is, this is a big one. It's an important one. And fortunately, we have enough seed, I mean, it's better than seed money. We really have a good boost going forward. So I appreciate you stepping up to help out on this and I'm sure I know all my colleagues do too. So thank you so much for that. This is, this is obviously the, the next really big landmark civic improvement that we have going forward. And hopefully soon, there'll be a police building following on, but this is really cool this is going forward. And secondly, two of David Gray's great-grandchildren are my neighbors and I alerted, I actually forwarded this dedication document to them and they had not seen it before. So they were just thrilled to get it. And so that's Will Gray and Martha Gray, who are both architects and offspring of Paul Gray and just direct lineage of this group. And they're really excited and pleased and I know that they will be participating in this effort as well. So anyway, thank you three for stepping up.
Mr. Hart?
Yeah, I do, I want to also echo our thanks. This is a very difficult task to do. It's a wonderful building and there's going to be a lot of interest, I think, in doing that. But being involved and hands-on day-to-day and raising this money is really a great effort on your part. We thank you very much. I do want to really understand this naming opportunity and stuff and I'm not exactly sure I do. So if we could walk through the presentation again real quickly with those exterior signing examples, it's not clear to me whether or not, I understand that all of those places with prominent signage are naming opportunities for signage at that kind of intensity and size of type font. And so when it says things like Cabrillo Pavilion Arts Center, that's, is that the sign for the Cabrillo Arts Pavilion? sign for the Cabrillo Arts Pavilion Arts Center? Or is that the sign that's going to say such-and-such person's name in recognition of their gift?
Mayor Dominguez, Councilmember Hart, that is used essentially to illustrate the fact that we will have a monument sign at the Cabrillo Boulevard level of the building. That design, and it's, what's it going to do? Is something that was prepared for a concept-level review for landmarks? So we're just reusing something? It is not intended to look exactly like that because that design work hasn't been done. The discussion that we've had, and I'll do two slides here to hopefully clarify, this again, it says Cabrillo Pavilion Arts Center because it's a rendition that was done by QBZ a number of months ago. So we're reusing what we already have. The proposal is that when the building reopens, is it will say Cabrillo Pavilion. And then whether it has the street address or City of Santa Barbara or Parks and Recreation yet to be determined. The concern that's been raised by Mary Louise Daze, and it's been, it has been a discussion, is placing anything in the vicinity of this entrance is problematic. We have discussed that the monument sign, which I think will be located right about here, could say Cabrillo Pavilion, and then it would have the two different levels so that people knew that's where they were coming. And that's the proposal moving forward, is that there wouldn't be anything on the building here. But if it necessitated sort of acknowledgement where, what, if you were going to the Brown Event Center or the such-and-such bathhouse, it would announce that there. And that's the concept. Without doing that, leaving it separately just Cabrillo Pavilion, for example, the naming opportunity would move entirely to the interior of the building. It wouldn't exist on the exterior. So that's the one, that there's a lot of concern and consideration how it's done, if it's done. Other exterior locations, for example, this barbecue area, I have a photograph in my head of how it was done at the Loboero Theater, if you're up on the terrace, and it's just painted. And I'm going to guess it's 32-inch font or something. I don't, I'm actually, 2-inch font, something like that, the name. That's the style that we would consider or recommend to be considered to the sign committee regarding what would, the height and the style in any of the exterior locations that we propose.
So rolling through the slide program a little bit more to where you have this, I think it's slide 15, where it says Cabrillo, there's that. So that, let's go back to that real quick. So that's what you're talking about, the monument sign that would be in the front?
Yes, we have in our plans, a plan to have a monument sign. It will not look exactly like this because the design work has not been completed.
Okay. And then the next slide, I think is 15, and where it says Cabrillo Pavilion, is that a potential name location? Is that what I'm understanding from this slide?
That is something that illustrates where it could be. In actuality, it would, it could potentially be on the building itself.
Okay.
But it shows that it, I should say, excuse me for interrupting you, that it would be painted.
Okay. And then I guess the other one on the side location, that's fairly self-explanatory. And then the promenade swing gates, I think that's slide 17. So those would be potentially, where it says East Beach and Santa Barbara, those would also be potential donor?
We've identified those as potential donor locations, yes.
At that font size in relation to that wall?
Mayor Dominguez, Councilmember Hart, I don't have a good answer for you. I'm not sure that this didn't, when this was designed, is to illustrate the style of the swing gate. It wasn't anticipated as a naming location. It's just an, and it could be that it may not make sense ultimately if we use the low wall instead. It's just a matter of different ways of looking at it and how it actually would be proposed. We don't have an answer yet because the design work hasn't occurred. What we have heard is that it needs to be very tasteful and not in, sort of, too front and center. And I think through the city's design review process, and clearly our campaign leadership team is going to weigh in on that, as well as the Park Foundation, how it actually is done. We haven't taken that next step to actually design what it would actually look like.
Well, I know the campaign leadership team has extraordinary taste and good judgment about these things, and they understand absolutely the balance point between being generous with the recognition of generous gifts and maintaining Santa Barbara sensibility and not using the facility as a NASCAR promotional effort. And that is something that is a tricky balance point. And I just wanted to make sure we're not approving any of that as a, you know, we're putting our stamp of approval on those aggressive designs. Because when I see those, I kind of gasped a little bit and said, hm, I'm not sure that passes my judgment. But I know the folks involved are concerned about this as well. I noticed in the agreement that there's a talk, there's reference to a term, too, and I'd just be curious about what kind of time we're talking about. Is this, you know, 20 years, 10 years, 5 years, 100 years? That might make a difference, too, if in fact we make a mistake and need to fix that in the future.
Mayor Dominguez, Councilmember Hart, I think Steve Wilmot would be best to answer that. We've been talking about examples. It talks about useful life of the building. There's a variety of different terms and conditions. He's got some examples he can actually give you more information on.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you again. There's a couple that are being used most often right now in these kind of agreements in projects across the state. 30 years or useful life of the facility. Most of the time, the donor agreement is going to start from there. Occasionally, then there's some back and forth with the donor, of course. But one of the best things, you've talked about, well, what are we really approving? The donor recognition guideline document here is the one you're really approving. And the way that document reads, it gives you those opportunities to set a term, to remove from it if something gets controversial or becomes a negative in the face of the city. Those donor recognition guidelines are the strength of this agreement. The second thing I would say is that this one is set up with three different places where the sizes and the approvals and the tastefulness get reviewed. One at the Campaign Cabinet level, then you have the Park Foundation as a next level, and then you have the Park and Recreation Department and the city administrator. So you have more than the normal for projects that we do in terms of opportunity to make sure you're tasteful, to make sure the size of the font fits, to make sure it fits the style of the city and doesn't become a NASCAR vehicle. So I think what you're looking at here is one of the stronger donor agreement and donor recognition policies that we've ever seen.
Well, and that makes sense for, because it's Santa Barbara, and that is reassuring. But I will say that I'm, you know, I will be really reassured when we see the font size and the actual implementation of this. And those are very long terms. I do understand, you know, this is the doubt, the balance between, you know, having people contribute and recognizing them, but life of the building in this instance has turned out to be 100 years. So we've got to be careful about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I wonder, Mr. Wilmot, if you did the donor signs at the Braille Institute, they look really good. And so, Mr. Hotchkiss, maybe you could go take a look at them over there. Very well done, beautiful, beautiful hand script. And so I think there's, it looks really nice. Did you have anything to do with that one?
We didn't do that particular project, but I can tell you, again, we don't end up becoming the artists of the plan. What we end up doing is making sure there's a good policy here so that when the artists do the interior design, get hired, they have some real guidelines they have to stick to to make sure that that recognition opportunity location fits and make sure the font fits and make sure those things happen. You have a strong policy document here that will guide the interior design group that gets hired to do this work, too.
Very good. Thank you for your contribution. So is it a good time to make a motion?
It is.
Thank you. I'll move recommendation A, B, and C to approve our guidelines. Authorize the city administrator to move forward and to preserve the building name as the Cabrillo Pavilion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rouse. I have one question about the Arts Center, the use of that phrase, and I know it was attached in 1977. Is that a reference to performing arts? Because I know there was dance there. I know there's been fine arts hanging on the walls, or is it supposed to encompass both?
Mayor Dominguez, yes, it's my understanding and looking back through the history, it's to encompass any, any way to think about the arts. There's been music there, there's been dance there, there's been art there, and it, and the review of the documents that I've done, it was to try to encompass the fact that it's a social center, a cultural center, a destination from that standpoint. And it's served in that capacity in a variety of different ways, depending on the decade.
And is that term something that you all will continue to use, or is that something that's still in flux?
Mayor Dominguez and councilmembers, we really think of that part of the building as a social community gathering area that supports groups and individuals that may be promoting the arts, that might be promoting personal, private events, banquets. It's a great location for public events and public discourse. So we draw a much bigger umbrella around its role. I think it can continue to serve all the same purposes that it does today.
So are there any names that you guys have contemplated that kind of capture that larger umbrella role, that maybe bring in some of the rec or social functions rather than just arts? In other words, is arts going to be something that maybe people who are doing a quick run-through city facilities rules out, possibly to our detriment because of the name?
Mayor Dominguez and councilmembers, I wouldn't imagine so, because in, the way we describe our buildings, we describe all the potential ways people could use them and take advantage of them. And then, and so whether they want to attend an event there or secure the site for an event that they have is a destination for, it could be an art show or it could be some other thing. So we actually talk about all the different ways people could consider using the building.
And there's a healthy amount of arts in there?
Yes.
Okay, great. Any other questions or comments before we take a vote? Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you all for the presentation. On to item 13.
Item 13, results and findings of the technical feasibility study on community choice aggregation.
Good afternoon, Mayor Protempor Dominguez, councilmembers. My name is Matt Forre. I'm the senior assistant to the city administrator, and I'm here to talk about the results of the Community Choice Energy Feasibility Study. We've been working on this project for nearly two years, and so a lot of work has gone into this. It's been complicated and complex, and we're here to give you an update. In staff's opinion, we may not be quite finished, but we've made enough ground to certainly bring you an update on where we are and to provide you with some recommendations on next steps. As I said, for about two years, city staff have worked with staff from the Santa Barbara County and 10 other jurisdictions to evaluate the feasibility of community choice energy. I'd like to introduce a couple of folks here today. The first is Jennifer Krieger. She is the supervisor of the Energy and Sustainability Initiative Division for Santa Barbara County. She was the project, or is the project manager for this effort, has done a superb job of channeling 11 jurisdictions and staff toward this end. Also with me is Alelia Parento. She's the energy specialist with the city's facilities and energies, energy division, a true energy expert. So I have brought the top-shelf talent with me today. Couple of things to go over today. I'd like to cover a little bit of background, the results of the feasibility study, a peer review that we commissioned to review the results of that study, talk about a little bit of additional due diligence that we'd like you to direct staff to complete, talk briefly about some potential options to achieve the goals that we all had hopes for related to CCE, and then finally, the need for an energy strategic plan that has really come to light as we've worked through this project. So by way of background, the way that community choice energy works, under our current regime in the southern, the south coast of Santa Barbara County, Edison both provides the source or is the generator of our electricity or arranges for our electricity. We also deliver that energy over their poles and wires and then to the customers. Under CCE or CCA, this is our playground. This is the arena where community choice aggregation competes with the investor-owned utilities. And I'll, I'll use that term today, investor-owned utility, to be inclusive of both Edison and PG&E in this case. So under community choice aggregation, the CCA procures energy on behalf of its customers, and we are competing against the investor-owned utilities. The entity itself sets the rates that customers pay for the generation portion of that energy, and then we continue to pay the fees related to transmission and distribution. To go in a little bit of detail, the goal of CCA is to be competitive with the existing utilities' energy pricing. So as I said, we're competing on the generation side, the cost of renewable energy, solar, wind, those sorts of things, but also natural gas as base load, energy provision. The investor-owned utilities, they continue to deliver that power. They also provide metering and billing services, so we would pay fees to the IOUs for that. But if we do this right, the customer themselves see very little change. Because in our case, Edison would do the billing, the bill would still show up on Edison letterhead, there would just be one, simply one additional line item for the generation component of the energy that the customer used that was provided by the CCA. There are a number of CCAs that have been created or are in the works in some cases. About six of nine of the CCAs that currently exist, exist in Northern California. And we'll, that, there are reasons for that. One of the reasons that we'll get into later is the higher rates that PG&E charges to its customers in Northern California, and the influence that that plays on the ability for a CCA to be competitive. So the first one, the first CCA that was formed was Marin Clean Energy, then Sonoma Clean Power. Those were the two big ones that are up in Northern California. Most recently, Silicon Valley Energy in the San Jose area has launched. And there are a number of others. In Southern California, the longest-running CCA is Lancaster Community Choice Energy out in the desert. Also, the City of San Jacinto and Apple Valley Choice Energy, the small town of Apple Valley, also in the desert, have been up and running. I think most recently in SCE territory is Pico Rivera, which is about two months old. So to get to our feasibility study, back in 2016, the county representing or on behalf of the 11 jurisdictions commissioned Wildan Financial Services to prepare a feasibility study to look at the feasibility of starting a brand-new CCA across three different counties in this area on the south coast, Ventura County, Santa Barbara County, and San Luis Obispo County. The City of Santa Barbara contributed $50,000. The other jurisdictions contributed similar amounts, and also the Community Environmental Council contributed to this effort. The study looked at eight different geographic configurations, everything from unincorporated areas, so the unincorporated areas of those three counties individually, the county inclusive of all the incorporated cities, and also some standalone cities, including the City of Santa Barbara. It also evaluated within those eight geographic configurations, three different renewable energy content scenarios. And so to go through those quickly, we had three. The first was the Renewable Portfolio Standard Equivalent. That's state law under SB 350. All of the investor-owned utilities must achieve 33% renewable energy by 2020 and climb their way to 50% renewable energy by 2030. That's state law. So we said, well, So we said, well, let's see if we can match the investor-owned utilities on that basis. The second scenario was a middle, what we called the middle-of-the-road scenario. That was starting at 50% renewable energy, day one, year one, and continuing 50% all the way through the 10-year study period to 2030. The third was aggressive. We said, well, can we start at 75% and see if we can make that work all the way through the 10-year study period? We also had an assumption that 2% of individual customers would opt up to 100% renewable, just voluntarily, for various reasons, out of an environmental mindset. So we took all those into account, and with those assumptions and with those scenarios, both geographic and renewable energy content, Wieldan undertook a methodology to determine feasibility. It took four steps. The first was to do, to determine the energy load. How much energy will we need to procure on behalf of all of the customers that are entrained in those eight different geographic scenarios? They also had to look at seasonal variations and other changes over the 10-year study period, most notably the continued penetration of solar, distributed solar energy on rooftops behind the meter. And so, and that is something that continues to grow and continues to be an offset to the amount of energy that the investor-owned utilities have to produce. The second is, based upon the energy requirement, the costs associated with setting up a new entity to serve that load, we had to determine the, the revenue requirement that would be needed. Thirdly, we distributed, or Wieldan distributed, that revenue requirement across customer classes. And that really got to what the rates might be that a CCA would charge to its customers to cover that revenue requirement. And fourthly, because we are competing with SCE and PG&E in these scenarios, we had to make assumptions as to how much those two investor-owned utilities would be raising the generation portion of their rates over that 10-year period. In this case, we are competing. We're competing with another entity. And that's a little bit of a different approach than what the city's normally used to with rate setting for trash or water or wastewater, in that we will take our revenue requirement, we might increase it by a couple percentage points for CPI and capital needs, and then we set rates that way. In this case, we really had to be mindful of, well, how much are Edison and PG&E raising their rates over the 10-year period, and where do we sit? So in the end, when we were evaluating a feasible community choice program, there, there are a lot of potential benefits that CCAs can provide. And this, these are the primary motivations for why a jurisdiction or a collection of jurisdictions might undertake this. Things like greater renewable energy. If we are, if we are making our own choices about the renewable energy content, maybe we want to go higher than what the investor-owned utilities are, are going after. And that's reflective of those two scenarios, of starting at 50% earlier than SCE, even looking at reach goals like 75%. Things like greenhouse gas reductions. If we, as we procure more renewable energy, the greenhouse gas emissions related to that renewable energy are certainly less than those emitted by fossil fuels. The ability to create special tariffs for solar energy and net energy metering, electric vehicle charging, so we can electrify the grid and further shift greenhouse gas emissions away from the tailpipe to electric vehicles. And finally, the economic development considerations. With these special tariffs, with these special programs of putting solar panels on roofs and putting charging stations in, that, there are jobs that are potentially associated with that. The key to that, though, is that we only can achieve, or a CCA can only realize those benefits if we can separate ourselves from the investor-owned utilities. So I made these numbers up, but for example, if SCE and PG&E rates per megawatt hour are $90 per megawatt hour, if the CCE can come in at $85 an hour, that $5 an hour margin is what can be used for, to attain those benefits in the middle of that graph. So that was our definition of feasibility. Can we beat the investor-owned utilities on the generation side and use that margin to these other ends? So Wieldan undertook that, that feasibility analysis. What they determined, and we'll get into the reasons why, but what they, what they determined were that the CCA rates would not be competitive with either Edison or PG&E over the study period, related to all geographic scenarios and all renewable energy content portfolios. Secondly, the CCA would not remain financially solvent, meaning that revenues would be insufficient to cover expenses over the entire 10-year period, and that the rates would be insufficient to maintain adequate working capital to cover and hedge our risk for any number of things that could come up in this changing and dynamic energy landscape. So those were Wieldan's findings. That was the primary author of the study. Under Wieldan's analysis, if we look at what the customer rate impacts might be, these are on the left-hand column, the three energy content scenarios. Under the RPS equivalent, the rate increase for CCA customers would be anywhere from 22% to 41%, depending on whether they are PG&E customers or whether they're Edison customers. And you can see on the right, the monthly bill incremental increase that a customer might, might see. So as we move up the chain to 50% renewable and 75% renewable, because of the cost of renewable energy, you see that disparity growing larger. One thing to highlight here is this rate of increase, the differential between PG&E and SCE is, is stark. And, and that really shows the difference in the baseline rates between PG&E and SCE. PG&E just charges more. For nearly every customer class, they charge more than Edison does. And so that, if, if you're a CCA trying to set up shop in Northern California, you have more headroom in Northern California when you're competing against PG&E than what we have here in Edison. And so that's, we'll get to this, but that's one of the additional due diligence questions that we want to answer is, how or, or can anyone successfully compete with Edison over the long term? So after getting these results, and after Wieldan concluded its work, the, the working group commissioned a peer reviewer. We thought it was a prudent thing to do. This is a very complicated study, built on innumerable number of assumptions. And so we contracted with MRW Associates to conduct a peer review, to look at the reasonableness of Wieldan's assumptions, to look at the accuracy of their numbers, to crawl through their workbooks, and, and make sure that, or to see if anything stuck out to MRW that, that we might want to run some sensitivities on. MRW focused on a couple of things. They, they focused on four separate areas. The first was the cost of renewable energy. And MRW felt that Wieldan's cost assumptions related to renewable energy were a bit overstated. They, they noted that Wieldan had looked at the, the cost of renewable energy dated back to historical contracts that weren't, weren't really reflective of the marketplace that CCE would be competing in, in 2020. And so they lowered the cost of renewable energy by about 30%. The second was the assumptions behind working capital and contingencies. Both Wieldan and MRW do agree that we need working capital and we need contingency reserves to hedge our risk against, like I said, this dynamic and changing landscape. MRW felt that the working capital could be cut back a bit and could be, say, three months of operating expenses instead of five, and the contingency reserve could be built up over a couple of years, and, and the funding of that would cease once we reached a target. Wieldan assumed essentially that we drained and filled that contingency reserve every year, which I think in everyone's mind said, well, then that just means the operational costs are that much higher. The third area was that, that area, the, the rate of IOU escalation. MRW actually boosted the rate increases that we would probably see from SCE and PG&E over that year. So we'd see it a bit higher, we'd have more room in which to compete. And finally, this isn't something that MRW specifically called out, but I wanted to go into this a bit, because it, it really is a driver of feasibility, and that's something called the PCI-A fees. This is called the Power Cost Indifference Adjustment. The PCI-A fees are essentially a fancy acronym for a, a departing load charge that the CPUC allows the investor-owned utilities to charge CCAs for the cost of stranded assets that, say, in this case Edison procured on our behalf. So before there was a CCA, right, Edison went out, procured power on behalf of the customers here in the city of Santa Barbara. If the city of Santa Barbara forms a CCA and withdraws from Edison's territory, Edison has stranded power contracts. And the PCI-A is meant to keep Edison whole for the cost of those stranded contracts and that, that stranded power. It's a big number. And in our, in our pro forma, the, the departing load charges were roughly 15% of the overall revenue requirement. So while a CCA is, has to go out and procure power for the CCA, which in and of itself is an immense cost, we then have these departing load charges that go on top of that, that makes competition complicated and difficult. So this is just a graphic description of that PCI-A fee. You know, normally a customer's bill, just to simplify a customer's bill, there are two components of any Edison or PG&E customer's bill. The first is generation, and again, the utility and the CCE would be competing in the marketplace for generation. On the far right, it's transmission and distribution. Everybody pays transmission and distribution costs. Whether you're an investor-owned utility customer, whether you're a CCE customer, everybody pays the transmission cost. It's that departing load charge in the middle, that's borne exclusively by the CCA. And that, again, was about 15% of our revenue requirement. So MRW did its work, and they lowered the costs on a number of levels. But again, the biggest changes were the cost of renewable power, the IOU competitiveness, they did some tweaks to the financing assumptions. In all, MRW lowered the cost of CCA expenses, the expenditure side of the pro forma by 23%. And so that's depicted here. The Wieldan numbers are the green line up top, the MRW numbers are the blue line down below. And about, and so MRW took away 23% of our costs, and then we looked at feasibility. And what we find, so this first figure is the predicted CCA rates in blue, and these are blended. So this is, what would the rates be blended across the entire service area, inclusive of Edison, the lower-cost Edison rates, the higher PG&E rates that give us that headroom, versus the IOU rates and what might happen? And you can see that in the early years, because of our high startup costs, because we're not capturing all of our revenue yet, we're getting beat quite substantially. In the middle, we start to gain ground, right? We start to approach competitiveness. And then in the final years, this is really reflective of Edison and PG&E catching up to us on the renewable energy front. So under our 50% scenario, we start at 50% and end at 50%. We are RPS compliant. Edison and PG&E are at 33%, climbing their way to 50%. So that last little bit of separation you see there in those, those out years is really reflective of PG&E and SCE ramping up their renewable energy content to meet state law. But then we looked at Edison alone. And, and the pattern is roughly the same, but the point of this slide is, this really shows the impact of trying to play in Edison territory, right? Edison's rates, the red line, quite substantially lower than the SCE rates, and we never approach competitiveness over that 10-year period. Edison, over the past several years, has shifted a substantial portion of its costs from the generation side to transmission and distribution, from the component of the bill where we would be competing, to the transmission and distribution side of the bill where everybody pays regardless of the type of customer. And so it's just hard to compete. And that's reflective of, of this table here. So the last little bit, just on the risk profile, this is one of the areas that we spent considerable amount of time with the CCE Subcommittee. Your council formed a Subcommittee to specifically look at CCE, was comprised of council member White, Hart, and Mario. This is one of the areas we spent considerable time. What are, what are the risk, risks related to CCE, and what are some of the mitigations to that? Well, both Wieldan and MRW, they both acknowledge that the energy landscape's dynamic, and it poses some risk to the CCA, a variety of them. Things like pricing volatility, things like the risk that customers that, that are pulled out of Edison territory into a CCE might migrate back to the investor-owned utilities, for whatever reason. For, for rates, for customer service, for confusing the impact of, or the, the influence of CCE on reliability, for example, which there isn't, regulatory risks, these departing load charges, and then the, all of the cost shifting. We have a number of risks that we would have to handle. Both of the authors also say that robust capital reserves and working capital are critical, and we can hedge our risks with that, right? So if we have a sufficient, if we have enough money, we can essentially handle anything that comes up. It's a catch-22. That's true, and, and we can hedge our risk with that cash if we can undercut the IOUs on the generation side. And without getting that separation, we, our model showed we were never able to pay off our reserves, pay off our, our debt, build up our own working capital, and, and remain competitive. And, and just the last note on this, you know, our, the crux of our study and the body of the feasibility report, look at the 50% renewable scenario, starting at 50%, ending at 50%. Just to keep in mind, and I don't, this is not a value judgment, but just to keep in mind that, you know, in my mind, from staff's level, it's the risk compared to where we will end up by default as an Edison customer. So as an Edison customer, by doing nothing, by 2030, Edison will be at 50%, so will we. And, and whether we can surmount those risks, that's part of the additional due diligence we'd like you to direct us to, to undertake. So with that as a segue, the CCE Subcommittee, which again, we met with three times since February of 16, they directed, or they recommended that council direct staff to complete some due diligence questions with county staff. When Santa Barbara County staff took CCE to the Board of Supervisors on October 3rd, the Board of Supervisors directed county staff to undertake the same due diligence. We think it's a good idea. And then the CCE Subcommittee also recommended through council that staff procure another peer reviewer to peer review the work of the county's new consultant that would help us with that additional due diligence. So what might that due diligence look like? We'd really like to look, look at a couple of different areas. The first is the cost of renewable power. It's the biggest driver of our pro forma. It's about 62% of our overall revenue requirement. It's 80 to 90% of our operational expenses. It's the big driver in the room. And we'd like to have a practitioner in this case, a firm that actually does forecast load and advise CCAs on the structure and the terms and the costs of their renewable energy content portfolio. We'd also like to look at some alternate financing mechanisms. So are there ways for, for us to build up the working capital that we need and the reserves without, for example, a big bond measure that has debt service coverage requirements, where we're having to raise revenues, you know, 25% higher than we need? where we're having to raise revenues 25% higher than we need just to meet those debt service coverage requirements? Are there options to further mitigate risks? For example, are there power purchase agreements where we can shift the risk of being wrong, of incorrect forecasting, of getting the terms wrong on a third party? We would pay a premium for that, most likely. But at least we can line up that premium that we might pay under this versus what WILDan's assumptions were and see if we can get some cost savings there. And if we are able to hedge the biggest risks that are facing a CCA, what might the impact be on the reserve requirements and working capital where we could shrink those down and not have to raise rates as high to cover those? With regard to the due diligence, we're not quite finished. It looks like the county may have sufficient budget to complete this regional work. It could be looking at this due diligence on a regional basis similar to what we already undertook. Additional funding would be required for that city-specific analysis. And I'm not done with all the costs, but I would estimate that being in the ballpark of $15,000 to $20,000 for that city-specific analysis. What we really hope to get out of that, though, is can a CCE compete in Edison territory? Both WILDan and MRW thought, and they surmise, that potentially North County and certainly San Luis Obispo County could make a run at CCA in PG&E territory. But where we live in Edison territory, we would really like a little bit more information to see if we can be competitive here. So I'm going to stop there for a second. That's all I have to say on the feasibility study itself. If there are any questions, this might be a good time to take them.
Any questions, or shall he continue? Please continue.
Okay, all right. So lastly, we looked at several of the goals that were mentioned that we might be able to achieve related to CCE. If we're able to make CCE work, we would be able to achieve several energy-related goals. And so myself, along with other county staff, Jen and Alalia and others in the city, we really looked at, what are the other options to pursue to achieve some of those goals if CCE is not an option for us? And so just to go down six or seven of them, if our goal was 100% renewable energy with city facilities specifically, which your council has adopted a resolution to that effect, there are other options for us to get there. We can pay a higher tariff rate through Edison as an Edison customer now and procure effectively a higher renewable energy content. So that's available. The second is, we had very high hopes, and one of the big promising things that we were hopeful for with CCE had to do with aggregating city accounts. Can we aggregate those accounts so that if we procure or build our own renewable energy resources, we can wheel that power to various facilities around the city? So are there options to that? Partially. So currently, we're able to aggregate meters on properties that are contiguous and owned by the same entity. But it's limiting. We have 150 city facilities, and not all of them are on contiguous properties. So we're limited. As part of this, the advisory working group, these 11 jurisdictions, we have started fairly robust conversations with Southern California Edison, saying, hey, we really want to achieve these goals. With or without CCE, one of the things we'd like your help on is programs and options to be able to aggregate city accounts. And so they have been receptive to those conversations. They've set up a variety of meetings. We'll see where that goes. But that's one line of inquiry we'd like to exhaust with Edison to see if we can make that happen. The other option is, and probably the most effective, is to pursue a legislative remedy. This aggregation of city accounts does not currently appear in our legislative platform. I think we should amend that platform to put that in. And we can work through League of Cities or some other entity to try to pursue a legislative remedy to that aggregation issue. If our goal is toward 100% renewable citywide, that's probably a legislative remedy as well. Every legislative session, there are bills that come up to increase the renewable portfolio standard. Most recently was SB 100, the daily own bill. It didn't pass, but there are, generally speaking, periodic pieces of legislation to increase that RPS, and we may want to get behind that. The second is another SCE program called the Community Renewables Program. It's similar to the Direct Access. It's kind of a hybrid of that, where the city may be able to procure a higher renewable energy content, but do so through Edison. And so that's another of those series of meetings that we have scheduled with Edison to see what the options are there. So just to quickly move through these, if our goal was special tariffs, things like electric vehicle charging and rooftop solar, those special tariffs are available through Edison today. If our goal was to develop large-scale resources of renewables, we have that option, too. City staff have proven themselves, and with your leadership, we've proven ourselves to be fairly adept at that. The installation of the Airport Solar Project, the El Estero Cogent, the Laurel Hydroelectric, we have experience doing that, and we can continue to look for those opportunities. And finally, energy efficiency. To get to 100% renewable for cities or for the community at large, energy efficiency is going to be the bedrock of that. We need to knock down the amount of energy we use, and once we lower that to the lowest amount possible, then we convert that to renewable. So what are the options there? Your council has already approved the PACE program back in June. That's one item, one option, the Counties and Power Program. There are three counties that are pursuing a renewable energy network for residential programs. They're more front-facing and have other incentives for energy efficiencies. We'll talk about this in a little bit more detail, but city staff will bring to you in several weeks a zero-net energy roadmap specific to city facilities. That'll be coming to you in November. And then there are other options like incentives and permitting help and other front-facing outreach that might help us to achieve those goals. And then the last item is through this entire process, and really, it helped us to think this through, through going through those options that might be available, is the need for an energy strategic plan for the city. And it's really connected in a number of ways back to your June 2016 Renewable Energy Goal Resolution. That was a two-pronged resolution that set renewable energy goals of ultimately 100% renewables for both city infrastructure and for the community at large by 2030. So just to talk a bit about where we are with that and how this energy strategic plan may fold into that. As I said, city staff are going to be bringing to you, in several weeks, a zero-net energy roadmap. Zero net energy for buildings really means that the amount of energy used by a building over an annual period is offset by the energy that is generated on that same site. The key to that is efficiency. Whether it's a building or a community, the key to that is efficiency and limiting the amount of energy we have to use. So this roadmap is going to look at city infrastructure and look at the renewable energy opportunities, but also the efficiency measures that should be put into place to make each of those facilities zero-net energy. That will go a long way, almost all the way, to us achieving our city goal of 100% renewable, specific to city infrastructure. What's missing, though, is the implementation of those measures. This will be the roadmap. How we implement those is another item. City staff, we're approached twice a week with all sorts of low-cost or no-cost capital opportunities, whether it's cap-and-trade revenue, whether it's the Bloomberg Innovation Initiative, whether it's SCE's forthcoming or rumored Guelita area request for offers. We get those quite often. And when those come in, they're complex, they have short timelines, and we're ill-equipped to take advantage of those. So one of the things that we'd like this energy strategic plan to help us with is to create pitch-ready projects built on that zero-net energy roadmap, specific to city facilities, that will say, for this grant opportunity, this low-cost or no-cost capital opportunity, here's the project. We have the concepts, we have the blueprints, we have the interconnection considerations, we have load data. It's all packaged. We're just looking for that right grant opportunity to make that happen. So that's where this zero-net energy roadmap would fold into this broader energy strategic plan. On the community side, it gets tougher. And with community choice energy, with our study, even with the MRW study, we were looking at the feasibility of 50% renewable. So even with CCE, we still had 50% more to go. And so looking out into the community, there are some things that the city can do to take leadership and help to foment private sector interest and development, community-wide. The first is a siting survey. And this is, I wouldn't say it's common, but there are examples of it where the city might look at the opportunities throughout the community to develop generation resources, storage resources, demand response initiatives, even microgrid opportunities to island and make resilient critical infrastructure throughout the community in case of a disaster or a power outage. So the siting survey is really key. We will identify the potential, and then we are looking for private investment to come in and make that happen. So then what are the tools that might attract private sector development? What's the policy framework that would achieve that end? What's the education component to educate both community members, business, but also developers on this is how you do it? And we ultimately want to put renewable megawatts on the grid to offset our overall So when we brought this to the CCE Subcommittee in October, on October 18, ultimately with the culmination of all of this, the CCE Subcommittee directed, or recommended to council that your council do two things. The first is to direct staff to complete the remaining due diligence on CCE through Santa Barbara County or with the advisory working group, including a city-specific reexamination of the feasibility, to be peer-reviewed by a qualified consultant other than who the county is looking at. So the county is going to contract with a practitioner, somebody who makes this forecasted work. It was the CCE Subcommittee's recommendation that we, similar to the WILDan MRW, that we contract with another peer reviewer to that end. Secondly, beyond CCE, the CCE Subcommittee recommended that council direct us to develop a scope of work, determine the cost, the phasing, some of the opportunities related to this energy strategic plan, including the funding options, with a specific emphasis on the near-term energy-related development or grant funding opportunities. And so what we would like to do, if you do direct us to do that, we will go scope this. We'll determine timeline cost. We would bring it back to your council for consideration. And with that, I can take any questions.
Any questions? Ms. Mario?
Thank you. So you talk a little bit about legislative relief on all of this. So I imagine that Southern California Edison and PG&E, they have a lot of influence on state legislators, right? So it would be our work, then, to influence them in our goals, to be energy-independent. What do you see as some relief for us or some actions?
Mayor Protem Dominguez, Councilmember Mario. Beyond working individually as a city, it would be working through groups such as the League of Cities. There is common ground in that all cities face the limitation on aggregation of accounts, for example. To the extent that cities, and there are six or seven in California that have adopted these renewable energy goals, we have common interests there. So I think it's banding together with our collective influence to then lobby on behalf of these fixes, whether it be the aggregation issue, whether it be a higher RPS content, we can do that.
Thank you.
Mr. Russ?
Thank you. Mr. Forrester, going back to the siting survey and the strategic energy plan, does the siting survey, was that for emergency or independence, I should say, in generation, storage, demand response? Does that preclude anything that's not considered renewable, i.e. natural gas? You mentioned natural gas early on in your presentation.
Mayor Protem Dominguez, Councilmember Ross, the focus of the siting survey for this purpose would be primarily related to renewable energy. What I was mentioning with the natural gas was, whatever energy we procure that is not renewable is generally provided to us by natural gas-based load facilities. But for us to achieve our 100% renewable goals, we're looking to put renewable megawatts on the grid. So the siting survey would look at the community at large, identify those opportunities for generation, better yet, generation coupled with storage, which achieves our resiliency or our emergency considerations, large-scale efficiency measures that would limit the amount of energy we're using. And so all of those three-pronged approaches would help us to achieve the 100% renewable goal that council set. And until we reach that, the remaining energy that we use would be from non-renewable sources, most likely natural gas.
But wouldn't it be possible to pursue both at once? And what I'm talking about is the emergency type of energy that could be produced locally, not dependent on the trunk lines that serve us from afar, so that you could actually have, because you couldn't do enough of a solar array probably in our geographical space to do 260 megawatts, whatever our usage. But if we had the ability to do so on an emergency basis, or at least on a temporary basis, and then do our renewables in our portfolio at the same time, wouldn't that be something worth, I mean, would the siting survey include potentially that kind of
Well, again, I think that to the extent that the siting survey leads to projects that are some renewable source coupled with battery storage, we will achieve our resiliency goals in the event of an outage. You're right, we're not going to cover the entire city's annual, you know, peak energy use any given time, but the siting survey can certainly look at critical infrastructure that we want to keep running in the event of an emergency. Things like Fire Station 1, Cater, El Estero, even what I've seen in Redwood City, even bringing in the hospital, for example, that we could be talking to Cottage. It'd be those sorts of things where for the critical infrastructure that we want to stay up and running during a disaster, I certainly think that the siting survey would go a long way toward achieving that.
Yeah, it just seems in terms of a community priority, it'd be, we could do the laudable goal, of course, going to the renewable by our target date, but rather than depend on monster diesel generators, a power cottage hospital, if we had some kind of a backup, given the amount of resources we have locally that's out there, it'd be a worthwhile goal.
Question regarding the county's position at this point. So they met October 3, and they're in the process of hiring a consultant. And you mentioned somewhere in the report that we might be able to use some of the scrubbed energy data. Do you have any more of an update on that? Do you know how far along the county is? Does it make sense to follow, wait until their consultant finishes their report before we start?
Mayor Timpar Dominguez, the county staff are in negotiations with a consultant now. They have not executed a contract, but they're fairly far along. I can tell you that everybody is looking for a consultant that does this on a day-to-day basis, and I think we will end up with that consultant, somebody who's actually making these purchases on behalf of a CCE utility. We certainly could. The feasibility study, the way that we set it up initially, was that any consultant that might have a role in the CCE
we set it up initially was that any consultant that might have a role in the CCE, once it was formed, could not be the feasibility study author. And so, now I think we're looking for somebody who does this for real. And so, I, you know, we certainly could. I think that the energy load that we've already scrubbed will go, you know, it's already prepared, it's ready for the new consultant to come in. When, if and when the city hires its own peer reviewer, I think we could just stipulate, look, you will have, you know, your peer review should focus on the work product of the primary author, you know, tell us early if you're going to have to go back to the raw data of Edison. That would certainly add a lot of months to the process. And so, you know, MRW, I thought, did a pretty good job of using Willdan's data, the energy load, and they were able to evaluate that pretty well. So I'm hopeful that a peer reviewer would not have to go back to the source and start over.
Great, thank you. On to public comment. Tom Widrow.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Dominguez, Councilmembers Tom Widrow, Santa Barbara City Watch. This is a bad idea. Feels like a scam to me. I hear staff who did an excellent job with their report talk about things like debt, risk, they talk about bond issues, increased taxes, et cetera, all for the idea that somehow or another, you're going to desperately concoct a plan where you can get close to where the public utilities are in a few years. It seems like, what is the outcry for this? I understand the drive for renewables, but this doesn't seem to make financial sense at all. Risking reserves, and then the idea of getting Willdan, and then because someone didn't like the outcome, you got to go get MRW to make sure, and then they have their own. What if the truth is somewhere in the middle? It's still a pretty difficult journey to get to where you want for solvency. I know this council tends to make really good decisions when it comes to solvency, this would not be one of them. If the CCA isn't successful, taxpayers will be left holding the bag. In San Francisco, a CCA was suspended after spending $4.1 million. Another report indicated that electricity rates were set to increase by five times. So how do we even know that the power they purchased is necessarily cleaner? I didn't hear that. What is that? Is it always cleaner if it's from a renewable? How much cleaner than what the utilities are going to do? So there's a lot of issues with this, and one, it just seems like also a bad idea to have staff go back and look at it again. How many times do you want to look at it before you realize, at least the biggest part of this proposal isn't going to work? Thanks.
Thank you. Katie Davis?
Hello, Katie Davis, Chair of the Santa Barbara Sierra Club, and I want to commend staff for all of your hard work on this and support the recommendations. I think those are sensible next steps for community choice energy. I want to point out that this feasibility study was a real outlier that runs counter to real-world examples of successful community choice up and down the state. And there were real big issues with the feasibility study, both the model, which the peer reviewer did not recommend but had to use, and with the assumptions. You know, personally, I've been involved with several startups that have grown to successful businesses, and if we'd taken a Willdan-type approach, none of those would have started, because it was highly theoretical. In a competitive market, you really have to think, what are our competitive advantages, and how can we maximize them? How can we lower startup costs and start small and then self-fund to the largest degree possible as you grow? And Willdan didn't do that. They assumed you'd have this great big organization, you'd have a bond, which nobody would really do in real life, and huge debt service, and a reserve that grows forever, and that's not, it's not, runs counter to real-world examples in how you would really do it. And the biggest thing is, they assumed that we would pay the same price as Edison does for renewable energy. And that was based on contracts that they made many, many years ago, when renewable energy was much more expensive. That just isn't, wouldn't happen. So they assumed an $80-megawatt-hour renewable energy price. You cannot now buy a power purchase agreement at that price. You couldn't find one if you tried. So the peer review brought that down to $60-megawatt-hour, but that's actually still too high. It should be much lower than that. For example, a Berkeley Lab report recently found solar power purchase agreements since 2016 have been in the 30s and 40s, so nothing over 50, and a number of under $30-megawatt-hours. So you have a much bigger competitive advantage with low, low renewable prices that would really give us help. So I think it is worth investigating the things that staff mentioned and doing another peer review and getting more eyes on this data. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alan Mosher?
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Alan Mosher. I'm a new resident of Santa Barbara. I come out of the energy industry. I worked for the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission for 18 years, and then the American Public Power Association for 18 years after that, and now retired in Santa Barbara. So I did this all for a business at the wholesale level. I agree with many of the comments of the study fundamentally that Willdan did. The basic study design was sound, but the inputs were problematic. They really did use high cost for renewable energy. I agree with Katie that the real going-forward costs of renewable energy are likely to be substantially lower. This is not a risk-free enterprise, as the commenter earlier had stated. It truly is something that you need to examine closely, but I have good confidence that it actually could be a successful enterprise going forward if you do the things of minimizing costs going at the startup process, perhaps starting with city facilities and then extending to customers after that. You should consider partnering opportunities with the LA County Initiative as an alternative. And I very much agree with Matt's concept, as put forward by the city administrator, that you have a strategic energy plan that embraces and uses the concept of CCE as one potential element of it. The real advantage of doing a community choice energy program is it builds the expertise of the city, the county, and the participating organizations to accomplish a lot of other smart city goals. You need to achieve rate parity with what Edison offers, but your goal here is to get the synergies of what you can do across different problems, such as with transportation, and get that integrated together, to combine that with what the zoning departments does in approvals of rooftop solar, again, to make it more efficient and easier for businesses and the communities to do it. Your sweet spot is in areas like doing community solar projects, where you could use tax-exempt debt and finance them at a cost of capital that is less than half of what Edison's would be. And there, you can get some long-term savings.
Thank you very much. Last speaker, Michael Chiakos. You have the final word.
Good afternoon, Michael Chiakos, representing Community Environmental Council. And as you've heard, the peer review raised substantial concerns with major assumptions in the study. And CCE urges the city to follow the lead of the county and further investigate these differences by engaging in more comprehensive peer review. And we also support strongly the staff's recommendation to develop an energy strategic plan. The original study had many issues, and the peer review and analysis by the community have uncovered. The largest one, which you've heard about, is the cost of renewable energy. Willdan used average renewable energy costs that reflected contracts that were signed, some of them over a decade ago, and new contracts are half the price. So this has a huge impact on the finding of feasibility. And there's also significant disagreement on utility rate increases, startup costs, financing, and more. The peer review also utilized an original, or the peer review had to utilize the original financial model while noting that this model was not something that they would use, wasn't industry-standard and was flawed. So we do support the county's approach of doing a more in-depth peer review focusing on the issues that have been discovered, as well as utilizing a new model. There are nine existing community choice programs, and eight more are set to launch soon. These are real-life examples that prove that CCA is working in California. And the locally-controlled program would lead to the greatest additional co-benefits, such as job growth, local renewable development, and energy programs that are designed for our region. Finally, we strongly support the proposed energy strategic plan, especially with the new 100% renewable energy goal. It's imperative that the city look at municipal-owned and community sites to develop all of these things. Many opportunities are passed up because the city doesn't have a unified vision. And with the state emphasis on climate programs and new cap-and-trade funding, it's especially important to have this energy strategic plan. Like the Bike Master Plan, which laid out a blueprint for the city to attract many large grants, the energy plan could lay the foundation for the city to attract grants and become a real leader in renewable energy. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's to the council. Mr. Hart?
Yeah, I appreciate all the work that staff has done. I'm on the CCE Subcommittee with Councilmembers Maria and White, and we spent a lot of time looking at this. I support the recommendations that staff forwarded from that committee. I think this is the right direction. One thing I think to weave together what people have been talking about today is to focus in on the resiliency aspect of energy to the South Coast. You know, Santa Barbara and the South Coast is at the end of a very long extension cord that brings power into our community. That extension cord is vulnerable to natural disasters. And I think Edison has recognized that, the Public Utilities Commission has recognized that. The solution that Edison put forward was to turn on the Elwood-Peaker Plant and to have the Puente Power Plant in Oxnard built to provide closer electrical generation in our region. The Public Utilities Commission has looked at both of those projects and decided those don't make sense economically and environmentally. So we're in a different energy generation regional situation than when we started this effort two years ago. And I think it underscores the need to both exhaust all of the opportunities to do peer review, to look at the CCE option, because that is the fastest, simplest way to get at all these issues and to generate, to create the mechanism to aggregate meters and to build distributed local renewable energy. Look, that's the real goal of all of this, is to have energy created on the South Coast that is renewable, non-polluting, clean, and cheap for customers. That is the goal. So the tool could be CCA. The tool could also be working with Edison to make that happen, and working with the city facilities. And we need to pursue both of those things at the same time. So we're going to relatively, at a very relatively low cost, do the peer review independently and with the county to make sure that all the assumptions in this study work, and then look at different assumptions to see the whole scope of the financial feasibility of that enterprise, and make sure that we're carefully evaluating that, because that's a really useful tool to use. And at the same time, we're going to develop a city-specific energy strategic plan that will help us figure out what we will do if that is not the case, so that we have both things pursued at the same time. Because we need to achieve the goal. We have to provide distributed local renewable energy in the South Coast. We have to figure out a way to do that, because we have this significant resiliency problem. And, you know, Edison is a partner in this, all the community organizations, local governments around us are a partner in this. It is catastrophic to imagine the economic impact of having a serious natural disaster disconnect us from our power supply to the South. The length of time that would be involved in a worst-case scenario to fix that is significant, and Edison is working diligently to address that, you know, and with their project, they, as a corporation, I understand they now have energy, a clean power and electrification pathway project that is, I think, synergistic with this. The state is going to continue to pursue higher renewable energy goals. I'm confident of that. I think the state legislature will be successful in that regard. The bar is going to come down from state mandates. We want to be working in concert with that. We want to be a partner in that. We have facilities, we have energy needs, we have the opportunities to be a player in that. The GLEDA offer that Edison is going to pursue very soon is an opportunity. If we had a strategic plan, if we had our energy strategic plan, I think we'd be in a better position. But we can't go back in time, we can only go forward as aggressively as we possibly can. And I think that the recommendations from the CCE Subcommittee, the staff's agreement with those, puts us in the best position to advance this as fast as we can, in the most cost-effective, making sure we're doing all our due diligence as we move forward. It's a great strategy, and I'm 100% supportive of it.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
Thank you. How much time did you spend working on this? Couple of years, I think you said?
Couple of years.
Was it just you, or did you have somebody working with you?
Mr. Dewey, who's now the Transportation Manager, started it up, and then when he went to Transportation and I came over to the city administrator's office, I picked up where he left off.
And the conclusion that you reach here is that the newly-created tri-county CCE program is likely not a viable venture in terms of CCE program's ability to provide competitive rates while remaining financially solvent, correct?
That was the finding of the, both Willdan.
So why would we, you put, I mean, you're a bright guy. Why would we put more of your time and energy on this when you've got other things you could be doing?
Well, that's the policy decision here.
Okay, that's a fair answer. Any idea what the cost would be to follow this recommendation?
Mayor Protem Por Dominguez, Councilmember Hotchkiss. The, again, the regional examination with the county's practitioner consultant, I would call them that, I think we can cover with the existing funds. At least, it's looking that way. For the city-specific analysis...
What are those funds? You say, "cover with existing funds"?
With, well, each of the jurisdictions had put in money, there's some money left. The county is certainly paying the lion's share, I think, moving forward with that, or has put in a lot of funding on their own to this purpose. It's the city-specific analysis that I think would be the incremental cost to us. And again, the costs aren't completely solid yet, but I'm going to guess somewhere between $15,000 and $20,000.
Okay.
The additional peer review, if your council goes that way of to peer review this additional study, that I don't know. I'm going to guess somewhere between, you know, $25,000 and $50,000.
Okay. Well, it's in the overall view of things, it's not a lot of money, but I think Mr. Widrow has it right, kind of put his finger on it. You have done a huge amount of work here, and it's hard for me to say, to shoot it down, which I don't, but I don't think you should do any more, honestly, because we're trying to push water uphill, and I understand it's a political choice, but it isn't one I would make. I think my peers probably will, but to try to make it work when we've already said, well, it's almost impossible, is, like I said, pushing water uphill. So I would encourage people to reconsider their position if they're going to support this. Thank you.
Ms. Maria?
Thank you. So the CCE is worth pursuing. Mr. Hotchkiss, it was a huge part of our Climate Change Action Plan. And I'm persuaded by what some of the experts out there have said, that it's worth one more review. Mr. Forrester reminds us that the county is paying the lion's share of this funding. I think the second part of the recommendation is very exciting, as a due diligence on our part. We need a strategic plan, and certainly locally-generated energy is part of that. You just haven't been in our meetings, Mr. Hotchkiss. The people are very excited about renewable energy, and the industry is dynamically changing. We can get legislative relief if we work on that. It's important for our city. So I'll be voting to put the two recommendations forward. In fact, I'll make a motion to that effect.
Thank you. Well, I do have to say, the executive summary is, you know, very straightforward, very honestly written. It is a little disturbing, frankly, to get the first set of numbers in, decide that those weren't the answer we wanted, and we went back to look at them again. But I'm fine with doing the due diligence, and I'm fine with utilizing the rest of the money we put forward to complete, at least to our satisfaction, where you think the numbers are. I'm not sure I'm up for putting a whole lot more money into it, but that would be fine. The transfer and storage of electrons is something that is still evolving very rapidly, but is still very inefficient. So the idea of going to have enough batteries or whatever to be completely self-sufficient along outages is still far off. The strategic energy plan part of this is what I think should really be the priority. I know we're talking about renewables, and we're talking about that kind of aggregate. But to come to 100% renewable by buying credits from Lancaster or some other place is not what we're trying to do here. We're trying to get our, we're trying to be independent, we're trying to be environmentally sensitive, but by the same token, is we need dependability. We need to have the ability to keep this... We need to have the ability to keep this city running in a very vulnerable, Mr. Hart brought this up, that we're basically an island when it comes to a natural disaster, whether it be a fire, flood, or whatever biblical proportional thing we have coming next, I'm sure it's just around the corner. So I would like to see us, as we go forward with this next scope of work, to really push that as a priority. Our strategic ability to provide our own energy from whatever sources, and I'm not going to preclude natural gas, and the Peaker Plant, and one of the Peaker Plant was a 60-megawatt idea, whatever, but it was there for a purpose. It's out there now. We're sitting on probably the biggest natural gas storage field in California, or one of them. Second one, okay. Number two, we're number two. And I know that's not the goal, but a mixture of what we're trying to do to get there is really important if we're going to keep, if what we're doing up here is to provide the community the service, because right now Edison is our partner and trying to do a tremendous amount of work in dependability. So, but they're just a distribution company. Currently, they also provide power as well, but they're a distribution company. Let's work with them. Let's do this in a very sober way that says, "We will get there." Edison is getting there, too, but let's do it together. Let's not, let's not cut off one arm to serve the other. Let's make sure that we have this in a way that allows us to go forward and stay open for business in times when we have our impending natural disasters. Thank you.
Mr. White.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the comments, both Mr. Hart's and Mr. Rouse's comments. That really does, that resiliency is, obviously, is a great big deal. We've been banging our head against the wall on the Peaker Plant, as just as, how do we, what do we have as our backstop? And we know we need that. And so, and the other two pieces of the puzzle that I'm seeing, the peer review and the strategic plan, we have seen over the last, on my years here, this city take on the humblest of projects, maybe those are the ones that have been kind of the coolest, where, wow, just the changing of the metering on our athletic fields resulted in tens of thousands of dollars a year in savings, and just on and on, like they're just taking on one piece after the other, the partnership with Edison on changing out air conditioning, and just those pieces, one after the other. And so, and we, as Mr. Chiakos was mentioning about the Bicycle Master Plan, we have, that is just so amazing how we, you know, having that document in hand gave us the ability to spring into action and really score big statewide with grants. So I'm supportive of the package, and I really appreciate the emphasis on the resiliency. I don't get it quite how that just seems to be, we keep ending up, "I'm sorry, you don't get to be resilient." It just seems to be this bureaucracy somewhere that's not helping us to get our number-one priority, one of our number-one priority things, anyway, nailed down, and then, hey, you know, in 10 years, if we've got another, a big mega Tesla battery there or something that's our, that's our resiliency, fine. But between now and then, we just, you know, if Tony Bennett ever comes back and entertains us again, we want him to be able to pull it off. So I will be supporting the full package.
So it's almost all been said, so I want to incorporate everyone's comments. The one thing I don't think that we put a lot of energy into was talking about the market-based concept of this plan, which is something that generally conservatives and libertarians and liberals alike agree upon, because it gives you choice. You get to choose who provides your energy. In fact, in Texas, which is one of the biggest oil-producing and manufacturing states, has community energy choice for the entire state. So I think it's something that we definitely will end up with, whether it takes two years, three years, 10 years, hopefully sooner is better, but the fact that the chambers behind the idea of market choice is refreshing, and I'm glad to have their support. So are there any other comments or questions? If not, we'll go ahead and take the vote here. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
So that's 5-1. Hotchkiss opposed. We'll move to council and staff communications. Ms. Maria.
Thank you. I helped organize and participated in a Know Your Rights workshop this weekend for undocumented people in Santa Barbara. It was at the Franklin Center, very well-attended, and I thank the Mexican consulate and other service providers for being there for our residents. Thank you.
Mr. Rouse.
Thank you. On Saturday, I participated in the Summit for Danny at Ealing's Park, which was, had hundreds of people there, and just very, very well-attended, and raised a whole bunch of dough for the, that house that helps our youth recover.
Anyone else? If not, I'm going to wish my mom happy birthday and wish everyone happy Halloween, and that you're in this meeting.